Council Thursday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting to order at nine thirty A M. Uh, councillor Gerlock ascends his regrets. And I see we're missing a few, but I'm assuming they will be coming in soon. Councillor Hall, councillor Capitanic. Uh, well, uh, hopefully we'll hear from them soon. We, uh, would like to start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. The first item up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Go ahead.
I'll approve the agenda if it was done.
As men approve as presented, alright, and so we do have to go through around to council to identify which items to discuss. So far, uh, the items that must be discussed are two point one, three point one, five point one, six point two, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, seven point six, eight point two, eight point five, eight point seven, eight point nine, nine point two, and all our enclosed items, uh, thirteen point one through thirteen point four. Is there anyone else who would like, go ahead, please?
I'd like to table eight point five to the next county council meeting.
Okay, we'll do that when we get to it, so we'll have that up, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, go ahead councillor Anderson.
I'd like to discuss item seven point one.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to discuss item seven point one.
Seven point one, okay. Alrighty, and is there anyone else? You need any? You okay? Alright, so we'll run through that list one more time. Two point one, three point one, five point one, six point two, seven point one through seven point six, eight point two, eight point five, eight point seven, eight point nine, nine point two, and all of thirteen, thirteen point one through thirteen point four.
I'll throw on eight point one.
Eight point one, okay?
Yeah.
Everybody got the eight point one added, and I think if that's, we're good to go. Uh, councillor Minns would like to, um, move that we approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? And I see no opposed, thank you. We will go on to three point one, which is our public hearing. And I will start with, um, good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending the public hearing regarding bylaw zero zero six, twenty twenty five, to close a portion of an undeveloped road allowance located between lot one, block one, plan one one two zero two two one seven, and a portion of crown land adjacent to Amis Lake. I'm Tracy Holland Reeve for Athabasca County and councillor for Division Five, and I will be the chair of the hearing. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. Before we would begin, I would like to take a moment for introductions of those, uh, councillors that are present, and beginning on my right is...
Uh, Rob Minns, uh, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Lake area.
Thank you, good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, Far North.
Yeah, Wallack, Division Nine, north of the river.
Kelly Chamsak, Division Seven, Atmore, Grassland, Prespea areas.
Brian Hall, Division Four.
Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three.
Thank you so much, and if I've ever introduced myself, we also have with us, uh, Mr. Jordan Schenkelberg, um, Mrs. Karz Marscheck, we have, and these are communication coordinators, we have our recording secretary, Miss Leah Blair, our C A O, Mr. Beck, our director of, uh, corporate services, Director Ambley, we have our land specialist, uh, with us, Diane Clushay, and we have protection and, I never get it right. Director of Community and Protective Services, Krista Wilkinson, uh, with us here at, uh, around the table. Also, um, any persons, pardon me, the secretary of the public hearing is Bob Beck, Bob Beck, who is the C A O for Athabasca County, I will get my tongue working. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and wish to be heard should please give their full name now. Nobody on Zoom, and we have no one here from the public. Okay, thank you. I will now, uh, declare the public hearing for bylaw zero zero six, twenty twenty five, open. And I will turn the floor over to secretary Bob Beck to announce the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of the public hearing is for council of Athabasca County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chair. Only one person may speak at a time, and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be, land management specialist Diane Clushay will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Ms. Clushay will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Councillors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only councillors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation, and the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you very much, C A O Beck. Um, I, we don't have anyone here from the public, but I would ask Ms. Clushay to provide about the background and explanation of the proposed bylaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Uh, the purpose of bylaw zero zero six, twenty twenty five, is to close a portion of undeveloped road allowance that is no longer required for the, by the traveling public. The undeveloped road allowance is located on the east side of lot one, block one, plan one one two, zero two two one seven. During the initial referral of this file, letters were mailed to affected agencies and adjacent landowners within one hundred meters of the undeveloped road allowance. And this was done on March third. The following responses were received. Alberta Forestry and Parks, which is public lands, does not support the road closure, um, and it's to protect Amis Lake from future encroachment and support the A C A conservation area. Apex Utility, the right of way required, there is a white, sorry, there is a right of way required, and that was submitted to the county, those copies. Adco Electric had no concerns as this is outside of their service area. Portis Alberta had no concerns, and the Federation of Alberta Gas Co-op has no concerns as this was outside of their franchise area. Tele's Communications also had no concerns. First reading was granted to bylaw zero zero six, twenty twenty five during the July thirty first regular council meeting. Adjacent landowners within a hundred meters of the road allowance were mailed notification, um, of this public hearing, and advertisement was placed in the Town and Country This Week newspaper on August twelfth and August eighteenth. In addition, notice was placed on the county's website, which provided information regarding the public hearing of this bylaw. The proposed road closure will not affect access to neighboring properties as access to the northeast twenty eight sixty four eighteen and to lot one, block one, plan one one two, zero two one seven is achieved by an access easement through the northeast twenty eighth quarter section of land. The undeveloped road allowance that runs north and south would only provide access to these two properties and infrastructure services requested to keep the first sixty five meters of undeveloped road allowance to protect future road access, and the applicant supported this request.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask Ms. Clushay? No? May I just, um, ask again, was there an opposition, I think you had said at the very beginning?
Um, yeah, Madam Chair, members of council, so Alberta Forestry and, um, protect, Forestry and Parks, sorry, um, did not support it.
Did not support it, okay, thank you. Ms. Clushay, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
No, there has not.
Okay, thank you. I will now call upon those who wish to speak, although I don't believe there's anyone here to speak, still no one from Zoom, just to confirm. So, in that case, is there anyone else, um, that has not spoken and wishes to speak? Does Ms. Clushay wish to make any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, does council have any additional questions or any of any speaker or staff? Go ahead, please, councillor Hall.
Can you, uh, just tell us again the response from the Alberta Conservation Association?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm just finding the email. Um, so the email received, um, Madam Chair, members of council on June seventeenth, uh, from the Geomatics Technologist at Public Lands, uh, noted that the attached road closure, uh, was received, and after consideration, it was determined that it would be best if the undeveloped road allowance not be closed and remain at is. Trespass on the road allowance from adjacent landowners should be addressed through other means other than closing and consolidating. If the undeveloped road allowance is closed and consolidated, Forestry and Parks does not require an easement for access.
Alberta Conservation Association, not Alberta Forestry and Parks. Cause they're an adjacent landowner, are they not?
This was from Alberta Parks, Forestry and Parks.
That was the question. Uh, just in your response, I didn't hear a reply from the adjacent landowner of Alberta Conservation Association, so...
Yes, sorry, Madam Chair, members of council, no, they did not respond back. They were provided a letter but did not respond.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, councillor Hall? Okay. Does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? Alright, there have, uh, there being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise council cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the, the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at nine forty one. And thank you for taking the time to join us this morning. We will now resume our regular county council meeting. The next item on the agenda would be five point one, however, um, that's at a ten A M. for our delegation. So we will move forward to six point two, which is page fifty four of your agenda package. Uh, policy ninety one oh five, fire response cost recovery, uh, from the August nineteenth committee of the whole meeting. And get to that, there we go. Alright, so we have a recommendation here, um, that council adopts policy ninety one oh five, fire response cost recovery. Would administration like to have conversation, does council, would council like to begin? Go ahead, please councillor Anderson.
I'll move the recommended motion, begin discussion.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Councillor Chamsak?
Um, upon reading this, I fully support this a hundred percent. I feel like, uh, one of the biggest drawbacks is actually the name, um, I don't know, I think in, um, perhaps a change of name that would better reflect it is, uh, a fire protection fees versus cost recovery. Service fees, please. Uh, yes, please.
Thank you very much. I'm sure like many of you, I've been reached out by a number of ratepayers that have watched that meeting that have gone back, looked at the history, and I've been asked to share some words, and then I do have uh, a few questions to direct toward the chief, so I'll, with the chair's permission, ask a question, wait for a reply, and then work my way, uh, through my list here. I'm writing this in regards to proposed billing structure discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting. I would like to voice my concerns over the proposed plan. I think the path being proposed is the wrong one. The last thing the county should do, sorry, should be doing is billing its own taxpaying residents for emergency services. You are wanting to now bill the very county residents whose taxes have brought, bought and paid for the equipment, which is manned by volunteers from their own communities. In a previous meeting, it was brought up that some council members didn't feel it was right for all taxpayers to have to carry the cost of fire response, and that it should be billed to the person who had had the fire. This is a completely wrong viewpoint. No one ever plans to have a fire or have a fire destroy property. That's why fire departments exist. The cost is shared by all, as it might be you that needs them the next time. After all, if everything always went to plan, there would be no need for the fire service in the first place. Now on to the proposed definition of human caused, non-human caused, and non-human caused natural fires. This will just create a very messy, very convoluted bylaw that will be full of holes and gray area and open to all sorts of interpretation. All it would take is an overzealous administration to cause a lot of additional suffering to people that have already suffered through loss through fire. And brings to question, who is going to be the person that decides what is billable and what isn't, and what recourse will the residents of the county have if they disagree? Will this result in lawsuits between the county and its residents? Because if this is the case, any cost recovery will quickly become negated. In the meeting, Chief, Chief Shalapay touches on what he considers human caused and non-human caused. For example, when talking about a holiday trailer going down the road and sparking fires, and that a wheel bearing would be non-billable, but dragging a chain would be. Just in that scenario, it can get messy. What if they thought the, the bearing wasn't greased at the proper interval? Would they require recent maintenance records? What if the trailer had, chain had broke off instead of falling off? Would they try and build a manufacturer? Would they need specifications on the chain to determine if it was the correct gauge for the application? Also, traveling a provincial highway, what if the person isn't a resident of the county? Would they, would they try to bill them? Would we even have the jurisdiction to do so? That's just in one scenario, and I'm sure I can come up with many more. Other questions, what if the person that lights the fire isn't a county resident? What if you have someone renting your land that lives in another area of the province? Would they try billing the land owner or the land renter? What if there's a squatter on your property that you didn't know about, and they light a fire? What if the fire is on someone else's, on someone's property, a retired senior, for example, that could never pay for any firefighting bills? This goes back to my earlier comment that firefighting is a shared cost among all, and the assumption that the insurance is the go-to fix is, isn't a well-thought approach either. Have you ever had to deal with an insurance on any matter? It's far from being the answer that you think. And that's if you're able to get the insurance in the first place. There's no guarantee of that either. You see where I'm going with this? All the potential gray areas and holes. If council is so very obsessed with charging for the fire service as an alternative, I think the only way you could ever do it is black and white fashion would be to prove wrongdoing, such as someone intentionally ignores a fire ban or an O H V ban and lights a fire. Other than that, it's going to get ugly. I would suggest that council prepare for every single billed incident to be appealed before them. Another aspect that was not discussed is the loss of confidence in the fire departments. There is a very good chance that people be reluctant to call in fires as they will be rightly concerned on whether they will see, whether they will receive a bill for the fire department showing up. People will stop regarding them as help when they need it most, and will start seeing them as just another layer to their problems. This would be disastrous to the area fire departments as they are staffed wholly by volunteers, friends, neighbors to the fire victims. And I'm sure they wouldn't want to be put in that position. You have one chance to get this right, and what you're suggesting is far from the best route. Remember, you have to look at what you're deciding and ask yourself, what you're doing, is what you're doing going to make life better or worse for residents of the county? As presented, this will make things much worse for the people affected by it. If you'd be interested, feel free to contact me. I would welcome the opportunity to discuss this more. After having the weekend to further think on this, I have a couple more thoughts. I find it a bit troubling that there really wasn't any discussion about whether the county should even be looking at billing the residents for emergency services. Only discussion on how to implement it. Watching the meeting, it strikes me that there are councillors that are for billing as much as possible. Unfortunately, the one thing I didn't see was the pay structure and penalties for not paying. The residents of Thorhill County I spoke to said, before it was squashed there, the county would issue a bill, you have one month to pay it, and then was an eighteen percent added to your land tax. There's a very real possibility of losing your property or having to sell it over a fire bill. When multiple fire departments are dispatched for a call, the cost can add up incredibly high. Talking at the coffee shop this morning, I heard that there was someone in Grassland Atmore facing this very thing right now. Seeing how parts of council seem almost determined to implement this. How about an alternative? Capital five thousand, something. This way, the residents can feel secure in the knowledge they aren't going to receive a bill in the tens of thousands of dollars and up, and don't have to worry about losing their property over a fire bill. The county has to recover. By the way, I'm not happy about that term, call it what it is, billing the taxpayer for services they've already paid for for years and years through taxes. And then instead, they can have fines or something for those that ignore a fire ban or R H V ban, or people that have blatantly ignored regulations. I still think it's a very bad idea to place the burden on the residents of this county, especially with the tax hike, sorry, especially with the tax hikes already affecting people. People that have lived here for years, decades, generations, and have all paid the taxes the entire time will now face a huge bill or losing their places when they're hit with an insane bill from fire services.
Thank you.
A follow-up to that.
Thank you. Is there, um, a lot more, because we're running out of the time allotment?
I believe I have ten minutes with the procedural bylaw.
We're getting there.
Some other points I forgot to add is they really don't touch on, and I'd like to see answers to, again, we briefly did talk about that. What if the person starts the fires not a resident? What if they're a visitor or traveling through? Are you going to go after the resident or a non-resident? Um, what about the people again squatting on the land? So that, that brings me to the first of my questions. How will investigations increase or the associated cost for them to prove or disprove intentional or negligent cause affect our budget and what we're going to do? That is my first question toward the chief.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Cromwell, so, uh, I'm gonna start with a statement before I answer the question, uh, just, just because there is a misconception. For over the last decade, we've had fees in our fire service bylaw. Billing is not new. This is something that we've had for a very long time. In February, when we came forward, we came looking to council's guidance to give us some guardrails in terms of what we want that to look like, because these fees have been there, so in the letter of the bylaw, that's maybe not been consistently applied, we should have been billing for everything for a very long time. So the purpose of this bylaw or this policy is not to establish a new process, it's actually to again, set those boundaries so we don't have the overzealous administration that you spoke of. In terms of investigating fires, we currently do budget for fire investigations. We have some investigation staff or personnel on staff that are qualified. Um, anything that's beyond the scope of our staff, we contracted out, and this is done for all structure fires right now.
Okay, what about non-structured fires?
Um, through the chair to councillor Cromwell, if we are going to be pursuing billing, the fires are investigated by qualified investigator. Again, we would bring in a, a external or using internal qualified staff.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, Chief Shalapay. Is there any further questions?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, um, please go ahead.
Thank you. Page fifty five of our agenda, this has a human related as a billable cause currently with a seventy five hundred dollar cap. Speaking about electrical or mechanical failure. However, during the August nineteenth committee of the whole meeting at three hours and thirty minutes into the meeting, I believe it was Chief Shalapay that stated mechanical failures, structure fires, not arson, bearings are not human caused and will not be billed at three hours and thirty two, direct accurate emission, uh, talking about a wire defect is not your fault, mechanical failure is not your fault. But now we're saying under the revised bylaw, the way I'm reading it, um, if your wiring fails on your freezer and lights your home on fire, we have no cap on on the fire, so we can bill you up to eighty eight thousand dollars. I'm picking a number here for fire response because the wiring in your home has caught fire.
Um, councillor Cromwell, I believe in our last conversation, wiring was in the home would not be something that was, uh, it would be that part of the cap.
That's what we had talked about yet on page fifty five in red on the new bylaw. Human related, which means an incident that is not human caused and occurs as the direct result, or sorry, indirect result of human activity or human-made thing, i.e. mechanical or electrical failure, is now on here to the line item, human-related fires with a seventy five hundred dollar cap. I bring that up because we spoke about that and that not to be billed, yet in the way the bylaw is now written, it has it in there. Policy, whatever, it has it now written in there as a billable issue. So that's why I'm quoting the times in the meeting where we talk about that not being billable, yet in our revision here today, we're talking about it being billable with the current seventy five hundred dollar cap.
Would count, would Chief Shalapay like to respond?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Cromwell, um, I will admit that I misspoke at the last meeting, and we didn't have the clarity documented. I made the revisions as I understood the council direction. If that was incorrect, I apologize, and we can make amendments.
Okay. There has to be difference between intentional and unintentional. You intentionally ignore a fire ban, you intentionally do not, or sorry, you intentionally do not ensure that your previous burn is out. You intentionally do not get a safe burning permit, and insert blank happens. You don't unintentionally need to be responsible for a bearing, a wiring failure, a combine, a hay bind, a baler fire. Your chain breaking in the middle is not your fault. Our definitions are not sufficient enough to be put in play. I fully believe that human caused is intentionally set, intentionally ignored rules and regulations, therefore caused an issue. You need to be responsible for your blatant negligence, and I know we don't want to use that word, for your blatant at-fault fires. However, for your human-related things that are out of your control, for your natural caused, for your uh, undetermined, you should not be. I, in, in the spirit of time here, uh, I'm going to cut a few of my examples out, but from what we talked about at our last meeting to today, it is different. I think we need to talk about it again. I think it needs to be revised. And I understand very much that we do have a billing structure in place, and we always have, and the idea of this policy is to safeguard our residents and make sure that we don't hit them with unfathomable bills for fire response and fire recovery. I completely understand that. However, as the county has, and we've already heard in this room, has not been consistent in that billing for years and years, and it changes. Will bill? We won't bill. We won't bill for a long time, then we'll start to bill. Now we're trying to make a policy to, to guide the train along. I don't think we're ready to do it. I think we can bring this back to our next council meeting, have another discussion about it, get better examples of definition. Because you're, you're not at fault for the wiring in your freezer. You're not at fault for your bearing.
It's a point of order, Madam Chair.
It's a point of order, Madam Chair. We are well past double the time allotment.
Thank you. Is there a way you might be able to quickly wrap up what you need to say and then we can continue with the questions from the rest of council?
We need to be very clear and only billing our rate pairs for intentionally and proven fires. And if we cannot do that without a hundred percent certainty, then we are not doing a service for them. We are causing an issue for them. And the inconsistency of administration passed should not be the fault of our rate pairs today.
Thank you. Thank you. If I may respond a little bit to the, as you mentioned, inconsistency. The point of bringing these policies forward is to have a consistent method of doing things. And I commend John Shalapai and and the crew for making something into what I think is very workable. Policies are not, as was mentioned in the earlier comment, one chance to get it right. Policies are a guide and they can be looked at at any time. So this isn't something that is beat all end all. They can definitely be brought back to the table as we are, as we know. We are supposed to go through our policies once every four years. And we can, if there's something that we find that's not suitable, that can definitely be brought back to the table at any time. When you mentioned the human related definition, human related means an incident that is not human caused and occurs in the indirect result of human activity or human made thing, whether that be mechanical or electrical failure. In the policy, it also says if an incident is determined to be human related, response charges shall be capped at seventy-five hundred, and that's something you would like to see as five thousand. I just wanted to confirm.
I believe the recommendation from some of the rate pairs was to cap it at five thousand. I don't believe that a resident needs to be at fault for a bearing, for a wiring problem, for a chain breaking in the middle. There, that should be non-billable.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep, as as time is going on, I understand completely. We do have a delegation here. I think this is probably a conversation that we will hold over until.
I would move that we table this item until after the delegation scheduled at ten AM.
Thank you very much. And on that motion to table until after our delegation, all those in favor? Thank you, and I see no opposed. Thank you. Need some water, Counselor Cromwell? I had to tease you a little bit. I, that's what I'm teasing you. No, I appreciate that. I understand that, you know, they want to have their voice heard. I understand.
Yeah.
And we have our delegation. It was five point one of our agenda for the service levels review. And it's logical is here in Zoom to present the report. I think we should probably start with introductions and on my right.
Good morning, Rob Minz, Division Eight. Baptiste County Carrier.
Morning.
Good morning. Natasha Kaptenik from Division Two, Collington, Manuk and New Plain Creek.
Good morning. Welcome Gary Cromwell, far north, far north, Optune, including the Wandering River area. Thank you for coming out today. Kind of.
Mia Wallach, Division Nine.
Kelly Chamsak, Division Seven, Grassland Atmore, Cross Media Areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division Four.
Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome Tracy Holland, Reba, Batha, Basque County, as well as Counselor for Division Five. It's nice to see you again. We also have Jordan Schenkelberg and we have Ms. Angela Cars Marschuck, Communications Coordinators. We also have Ms. Leah Blair, Recording Secretary, Mr. C A O Beck, as you well know. And we also have with us from the press, Cole Brennan with the Town and Country. And yeah, if you'd like to go ahead with your introduction and go ahead with your presentation, please.
Great. Thanks all. And it's great to see everyone, although virtually the plan originally was to come up, but for such a brief presentation and had some things fall through, I have to be here this afternoon. So logistically, it wasn't going to work. So thank you for giving me the time, albeit virtually. I'd like to start out all of these presentations with a bit of gratitude. I want to thank everyone for their time that they devoted to this really important work. And thank everyone that is, you know, doing their best that they possibly can in in what are troubling and and not troubling, but challenging times for us in in public service. I have a lot of gratitude for people that 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 do what I think is 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 really meaningful work for our community. So thank you for that. I'm going to go through a presentation, which I think you already have. And I might not be going word for word over each slide with your with your approval of that. I don't like reading off the slides, so I have some notes that I'm going to be working from. But please, along the way, if you need any clarification on a slide or you want to ask a question, please feel free to 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 ask it. I'd rather you ask it and have it answered than forget to ask later. After my presentation, of course, any any questions at all that that come up, I'd be thrilled to thrilled to respond as best as I can. It's great to have your administration in the room because they played a really big role in this work as well. So, you know, questions for them. And with that, if there's no questions upfront, I'm going to dive into the to the presentation.
I don't see any hands up, so please go ahead. Thank you.
All right. I also foregone my introduction, but I guess there is press in the room. So for just for the benefit of if this if this goes into your paper, who am I? I'm Kelly Rudick. I have thirty-five plus years now in in local government in one way, shape or form. My last paid position in a municipality was the Director of Corporate Planning for Strathcona County. In two thousand and nineteen, February, I went out on my own, ventured out into the private marketplace as a consultant for for local government. And I gave myself a couple of years to see whether or not I had something of value to provide to the sector. Here we are more than six years later, so I feel good about being embraced by our sector. Most of my work is with strategic planning. But I've also done work on every parts of the strategic planning framework, corporate business plans, department business plans. Likely what perhaps I'm most known for is implementing priority based budgeting, which is a different way of looking at allocating our resources towards programs as opposed to maybe sticking closely to a line item budget. So with that, I'm going to attempt to share something and I'm hoping it goes seamlessly for you. I'm hoping you're seeing the first slide of what was provided to you previously.
You bet. Looks great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now it's whether I can navigate it, which seems to be working as well. So to start off the work, a request for qualifications was sent out by by your C A O looking for someone who could help out with with this work. And in the requirements of that of that work, we're doing interviews with council and staff. Providing an inventory of your current services. Looking at the capacity in each area. And the thing that excited me the most, and I have a very big bias towards this, is looking at how well those services align to your strategic objectives in your strategic plan. There was also coming out of that was supposed to be recommendations on maximizing service delivery or some efficiencies in the organization. And how best to meet or exceed the strategic municipal objectives in your plan. Like I said, I have a soft spot for that alignment to strategic objectives. In times of constraint or challenging times, especially. I think that this alignment piece can be hugely critical to getting the most value out of our current services. I have been seeing a lot, and you would have seen this in in your term as well as with your colleagues around the province. The public is is their appetite for seeing tax increases is is has waned. And I think it is incumbent upon us to really ensure and and tell the story to our public that we're looking to maximize the value with our current services and our current complement of resources. So I think this alignment piece really done well and and with some diligence could really be crucial in in delivering that maximum value. You know, I think looking at your strategic plan in this way really enhances that focus. Allows us to be really a lot more disciplined if we stay focused on those priorities. If it becomes start of our part of our narrative with our public, I think that that adds a real bit of clarity. I think sometimes our public does does not really understand what we do and how we do it. So all of this work, but especially that alignment piece will be important. And I think this is I I wouldn't want to put any pressure on council or administration to have this thought that all of the recommendations that are coming forward are something that could happen overnight. I think what I would envision for for the organization and for council is to kind of embrace a longer term approach to trying to fulfill these recommendations. And there will be some talk later on on how we might go about doing that. Any questions yet?
Nope. Oh, nope. We don't have a hand up yet, but thank you.
All right, great. So one of the pieces was talking about how to improve effectiveness. And I think this added level of clarity that we're we're going to get out of this work is really going to help. We now have identified our service, our services that we provide. So your your administrative team went away and, you know, rolled up their sleeves, asked the people that work with them, you know, what is it that we do on a day to day basis? You'd actually really be, well, maybe you wouldn't be, but I'm sometimes a little surprised at some municipalities that don't have that yet. And and it's a really very important part around that clarity when we're talking to our stakeholders to know what is that we do. So we've identified a hundred and seventy-four unique services that we provide across the different departments and areas that that are within our organization. And so I think that we also took that next step to to define them. And the team was challenged to define them in a way that could be well understood by your public. As opposed to maybe sometimes we fall back on internal speak. And sometimes the things that that we understand really well don't translate good for someone outside of subject matter expertise. So so that was done. And so that helps us a lot with that clarity, like I said, and that understanding with with all stakeholders. One of the things that that I noted in the interviews with both council and with administration was one of the things I think that we could be doing more of is is looking at some time devoted to training in our most impactful valuable or aligned services that we provide. And sometimes those areas might not be things that that necessarily the public would see. Touching them on a day to day basis, but would be more facing towards the organization, something like leadership. And and some training on corporate planning. So how are we going to be the best version of ourselves as an organization? Another thing that came across was perhaps we need to up our game as far as budget knowledge across the organization. And but one of the areas that did come up and not surprising for for a county. And this is across the board. I work with a lot of counties in the province. Not surprisingly, roads is one of the areas that that came up. So but this will come up later in some of the other slides around some of the themes that arose during the the interviews as well. And another area is maybe strategic execution. So like a lot of other municipalities, this is across the board, whether rural, urban. We seem to be losing out that strategic time to make sure we're we're spending our time in the most appropriate ways. We've gotten really good at being reactive to spur of the moment requests of us. And it's come at the expense of being really strategic with our time, effort and our resources. Another area is, and I understand we're making some headway here, we have a new communications plan. So that was another thing that came up that I think we could we could look to be getting better at, which would help out everyone, all the stakeholders. In in letting people know what's going on in the most most effective way. And I mentioned priority based budget. And I mentioned priority-based budgeting earlier. This is something that maybe could show up in one of your upcoming um either corporate or department plans to consider. Um priority-based budgeting is for me one of the ways to budget that really homes in on that alignment of what we do to the things that we want to achieve. Uh it kind of moves us away from the traditional line item budgeting and just re- getting really good at costing the things that we do year to year. You still have to do that. But the next level of value is ensuring that the things that we are doing are in alignment with the one of the things that we want to achieve and and priority-based budgeting helps um do that in a really big way. Um as far as efficiency goes, um every one of your areas now uh within those one hundred and seventy-four services um has also some scoring as to how impactful what that service is to moving the needle on our um pillars within our strategic plan. And so when you do that, um and we also have asked them to gauge how much time is spent in each one of those. So we have the 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 two factors, alignment and time. When we have those, the most efficient way that we can be moving the needle on our priorities is to ensure that we try to spend as much time as possible in the most aligned and most valuable areas. So every area now has um a sliding scale or they have a list of the things that they do. And they have um the ability to look in there to say, can we can we reallocate some time from this lower-valued area to someplace that we know that's going to be more impactful? Um and sometimes that's not possible just because of some expectations in that lower-valued area, whether it be um another order of government is compelling us to do it through legislation or whatever. Um but this new data is something that we can use to at least consider some reallocations. So for me, that's the biggest efficiency we can have. We don't necessarily have to jump to adding more resources. Um we could try to tweak the resources that we already have. Um but if we do get into a a position where that reallocation just isn't possible. Um we should still use that data to understand where the most valuable area is if we do decide we need to add resources. Um and coming up later in the presentation, um I think that I've I've got some recommendations on where those areas might be right now. Um another thing that we can do to improve efficiency is take that strategic time, like I suggested, to complete master plans. Um policies and pro- procedures that help inform that long-term strate- strategic decision-making. So you know, recreation master plans, I know we've got, uh we started a lot of work in um in our infrastructure-related areas. Um those plans will be hugely informative on what we should be doing in the future, how best to spend our time, effort and resources um to get the biggest bang for our buck. Um the other thing is more cultural, I think. Um like I said, sector-wide, I've been seeing not, you know, not just not just us, but every one of your colleagues seems to be struggling with this ability to take a disciplined approach to looking at our strategic long-term goals rather than being reactive to things that hit us. You know, right on our way to the to work that day or for council. You know, you're heading into the council meeting and you get somebody that calls you, and that just seems to be top of mind for us. And it's very natural for that to happen. Um but kind of maybe longer-term thinking would be we should we could make some incremental improvements on being more um disciplined on our strategic priorities that are in that strategic plan. Anyone have any questions so far?
Uh, nope, everybody's listening very intent.
Okay, I assume there's some notes being taken and maybe I'll get hit up with questions after. That's fine, too. Um another area that we were asked to look at was responsiveness and um wasn't really necessarily part of the work. But I know there are performance measures that a lot of the areas have, whether that's uh planning and development, I think, are compelled by uh legislation. I think the M G A has some turnaround times or their their um their area does, whether it's a discipline or a profession. Um you know, there's some things in finance that we have to do. Um but if where where we have performance measures, I think it's really important to look at the trends as opposed to a point in time. Um for me, a good example that we encountered in the past, um in my time in Strathcona County. One area was getting really overreactive to um some complaints that were happening um in the springtime. Um and so they, I think it was in planning and development was was on weed inspection for some reason. Maybe it was unsightly. So the most of their unsightly complaints would happen in the spring. And so they were taking people off of their regular duties to to amp up resources in the spring. And um I guess what happened, though, was we found out that it was it was one in particular incident when weed was prolific one year, and we overreacted to that. It wasn't a trend that we were seeing. It was a it was a point in time. So um they had to dial the needle back on on the resources in that area just the next year uh because they weren't seeing it. So I guess don't be too sensitive to points in time, looking at trends. Um I think some training in customer service, maybe specifically for local government. I understand from our uh senior leadership team, there's a lot of people that are relatively new to local government. So you know, we don't necessarily have that baked into our D N A just yet. Um and that goes for everyone outside of of your senior leadership as well. Um I think there's something to be said about customer service that is specifically within our um our sector. And this will come up and it will show up in more specific department recommendations that that have showed up. Um but I I think there are some service areas that uh we are um we are providing right now that are discretionary in nature. And when we looked at the alignment scores, they actually don't have that strong of an alignment to our strategic goals. We may want to consider um either turning the dial down on those areas. We may even want to consider getting out of them so that we can reallocate that time to somewhere again that's a little bit more uh valuable um and aligned at the at this moment in time. Um there also might even be some sort of a private provider um or a community association that could take that on for us. So um sometimes we just roll up our sleeves and get things done. But uh without this look at our alignment and whether it's a discretionary, sometimes, you know, we're trying to do the public good, but but sometimes it's it's it isn't as necessary or as aligned as something else that we can do. So specifically around staffing. In general, I would say we're very comparable to a lot of other places out there, uh considering our size and considering our um, you know, the the makeup of our community. In that we're very, you know, we're very big. We have a lot of roads. Um we have a lot of uh of uh rural infrastructure, uh like a lot of other counties. Um and with the caveat that I would always be recommending, instead of adding staff, looking in that area to see if we can reallocate away from some things that might not be as aligned or as as valuable. All that being said, um there are some areas that did come up as potential candidates for, in in my opinion. Uh and this is given the work, the interviews with all stakeholders and then the work through the alignment uh pieces, et cetera. It looks like agriculture could be an area that that might require some more resources. Um insurance came up as well um that might need some more some more capacity. It's a really highly aligned um area with our strategic pillars and goals. Um H R um and I don't necessarily see staffing in H R, although you would always want to look at that because it's uh H R is an area that has impact across the whole organization. Um and this is especially challenging, though I would, uh but I would always encourage, we're probably doing it. And it's probably uh kind of a moot point, but we'll always try to fill those vacancies and improve our ability to reduce absences and turnover rates. Um economic development, I think it it seems that it's an area that requires a little bit more of a certainty in the mandate that that they that they um are asked to deliver on. And then given that more certainty, there may be some potential to look at um increased resources there. And recreation is a bit of a tough one for us, and it always is in in um in the county environment. But I think it's something that should be on our radar for for potentially uh more resources. Um not, this wasn't really part of the scope or anything, but um I that comes with some sort of conversation, of course, with your partners in the region about what what that might look like as well. Um but yeah, there's more specific recommendation in um a tool that was provided to each area called observations and recommendations. So each individual area um got a piece uh delivered by me when I looked at their alignment and their and their time allotment um scores and uh and made a series of recommendations and observations for them. All good, or does anybody have any questions for me at all?
Just in a quick glance, no, everyone is still uh listening very intently. Thank you.
Okay, great. Captured audience, that's awesome. Um so like I said, going back to the requirements of the of the um R F Q. Every area now has uh an initial inventory of services that they currently provide. And I say initial because I would always give the encouragement to look at this periodically. So sometimes um if we don't look at, and you probably see this in your policies and procedures for council, it's bylaws and things. Like if we don't stay on top of them, sometimes they sit there and they get stale. This is something that I would strongly suggest doesn't become stale, that we look at it periodically. Um just suggested that we use comparable municipalities when we uh develop the inventory. So um Woodlands County, Lacombe County, and I threw in um city of Fort Saskatchewan, knowing that they're not a um county, and there was some service differences there, obviously. But I think um Fort Saskatchewan did a particularly good job of uh identifying the services in their area. Because they had, they did it being mindful that they wanted to um, they wanted to go down the road of priority-based budgeting. So they did that. Yeah, so. Um when we looked at time allocation and strategic alignment. Um every area now has the ability to, and this was, this is again, something that I would be um from time to time, look at, they benchmark how much of their total F T E complement um was devoted to each one of those service areas. They also, like I said previously, they scored for alignment to your strategic pillars and goals in your plan. Um and this is where I would suggest um the owners of that area or the the senior leadership would be looking at both this alignment and this percentage of time spent and looking to get the most value out of that time spent. So if there are any ability to reallocate, reallocations are very powerful because they get more horsepower in your most valuable areas without adding more resources. So without any tax implications to your budget. So just uh in general, some suggestions when we move forward is um when we're moving to or from this strategic thinking, which I think is what we're doing right now, and we've taken an initial step to be a lot more strategic. Um we have to really kind of move towards this more disciplined approach. Um and what'll happen is both admin and council may have to kind of put on the side of their desks things that they would normally jump to. Um because um you know, it might not be the most valuable valuable use of our time. We need to really start honing in on, and this is sector-wide, this is some, this is uh advice that I would be giving to absolutely every client that I would have right now. Um but as we start doing that from time to time, it starts becoming more and more of a culture. Um in that we're always looking to maximize that value that we're providing to our community. Um and at its basis level, uh the way we do that is with our time management. Make sure that the the time that we're spending and the resources that we're um expending are going towards those absolutely most valuable things for our community. And there's a real natural break right now because I'm going to get into more specific recommendations. So I'll ask again if there is any questions just yet.
Nope, doesn't look like it so far. Thank you.
All right, so um specific recommendations, there were a lot. So I made twenty-eight recommendations. And that's just because I wanted to be complete um with everything. And I had in mind that this is was again, something that's not going to happen overnight. I would it would be wrong, I think, for me and for council to expect that um, you know, Bob, Bob and Bob and team would be able to get after this and and you know, in a year they'd be done. Um I think there are several years of of work in these recommendations. Um and some of them have been um delineated by stuff that we could do maybe within a four-year time timeframe. And others are, if I say future recommendation, is it might fall outside of a four-year business plan cycle. Um so there's twenty-eight uh specific recommendation in the summary report, many more within individual areas. So all the departments had specific recommendations as well. Um I'm going to go through the recommendations here under the themes uh that arose during the interviews that were done with council and and administration. The themes that I heard were risk, equity, consistency, communication and training. So under the theme of risk, um these are some of the things that I noted. Um I would definitely consider going forward some sort of risk management policy. So we are um not, and this isn't just budget-related. This is related to, you know, safety, related to keeping on up on top of policies and procedures. Um insurance was was mentioned earlier, that's something we need to get on top of. So just the general risk management policy. Um your C A O right now, I understand, is the D um the D E M for the entire region. And I I think there's an element of risk involved there for us individually to have um that person spread so thin with that big um a big bit of accountability right there. Um in F C S, um I don't, I don't want to choose any favorites here, but I will say that F C S did come up um very regularly as something, an area that we are super proud of and things are going extremely well there. Um but I understand that our F C S S manager uh might be transitioning in the near future. So there is some risk there losing um that that person or that resource and still being able to sustain that level of of excellence. So I think possibly some formalization around um that transition and what it might look like. As well as uh we do have some service provision in that area that I that I understand could use some more formalized work um in the uh transportation, community transportation area. All right, um equity, so um the theme of equity, I will tell you that maybe I actually expected to have some of these interviews. And maybe it's because of my past experience with other counties, well, and other municipalities in general. Um lots of these interviews lead to, we need more resources, we need more people. And I will tell you that that didn't come across as a theme. It might have showed up in some specific areas, but it didn't rise to the level of a theme. But what did was some equity. So um in general, it was felt that we have the right amount of people. Um but the level of consistency within some of the service areas and some of our staff um needed to be up. So um when I talk about equity, um we, I think we need to look at prioritizing some of our bylaw, policy, plans, procedures renewal. Um that needs to be something that 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 is done so that, you know, um all the areas are held to the same standard. Um one area in particular, though, that I think equity came up in, and wouldn't be surprised for everyone in the room is roads are a big deal for us, obviously, and some areas of our And some areas of our community um are feeling that. They're not getting the same level of of service as others. And it's not necessarily even a number of bodies there. Um, but maybe time spent, but I really think that this this roads plan or this this, there there was, like I mentioned earlier, there's some. Increased emphasis right now on infrastructure and long term planning there, that will really help. The other thing, though, that I think will help here is back to another slide that talked about training, and I talked about training in roads. Um, I think if we could carve out some time for our more um experienced operator. Um, to spend some time with some of the more junior operators to try to spend that time to get them up to the same skill level, that will really. Um, really help. Um, and I don't know what that looks like, that will be on 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 Marshall in that area, and then I think some of your leadership to talk about. What that might look like, but I think some dedicated time to training um would would go a long way. Um, as well as, um, I think your future um should include. An expectation that all department uh departments have a business plan and that those business plans. Align strongly with um. With our, both our corporate plan and a and a strategic plan. Um, so I would put a priority on upping our game, I guess. At the department level with this long term planning. From a consistency sake, um. I don't know if it's embedded in this or not, but in this presentation, but. Um, I get a lot of mileage from what I call a strategic planning framework. And included in that strategic planning framework are kind of the levels, there's a tiered level of of. Um, priority and of direction um to everyone in our organization. Um, it starts at the very top from our community that feeds into our strategic plan from our council. Um, but I think we need to then take that council direction and get more sophisticated with a corporate plan and a department plan. And then, like I said, consider possibly in the future um, a a priority based budget. And so um, as we're, as if we do decide to go down that road, as we're um make. Making strides in this strategic planning framework. We need to ensure that the whole organization learns about that and learns uh how it's important and the clarity that it provides. Um. The other thing that we need to do, and it was mentioned before, but we should all uh prioritize filling the current vacancies in our org chart. But when we do that, um, we should always not just fill a body to fill a body the way it exists on our org chart right now. But to really kind of test for um how well that current position aligns with. You know, the work that we're doing and the priorities that we have. Always give yourself that ability to be flexible, um, to up that value of that resource coming and do that every time. Um, and I would really love to see part of our future um on a consistent basis is continue to go back to this work that we did. Um, with myself and your organization. To look for those reallocation opportunities first, rather than pulling the trigger on on, you know, a new body or a new F T, we may come to that point. Um, but uh I would strongly encourage that we come to that point after doing the work, seeing if there's any reallocation opportunities. As far as future recommendations, I would say, um, I would look to do this scoring effort again. Um, but what I would do is, um, and not surprisingly, this scoring shows up in a priority based budgeting uh effort. And. That effort also includes kind of a corporate filter. So right now, we've asked individual areas to score their own um services. And sometimes there can be a bias involved where they overscore, I would say I didn't necessarily see that with you guys, I actually saw what was. Less common, but can happen is that people underscored because they didn't really. Um, see a fit that that could possibly have been there, so what this corporate effort does is take that department scoring. And it allows someone to look at it from across the whole organization's viewpoint. And approach these departments. Um, and suggest where they may want to um give it a lower or a higher score from their perspective, and just talk about why the number was it was what it was. And give that opportunity for a rethink. The other thing that you could consider um, when you're looking at these services is adding some more criteria for for scoring, so we did what's traditionally called a results scoring, and that's. Align to your strategic, um, your pillars and your goals. The next iteration could include things that are called attributes. So you could score your services based on how much of the community was impacted by that service. You could add a degree of cost recovery, so some of our services that we provide have the ability to recover costs and some don't. Um, you could look at a degree of mandate, so some of the things we do are dictated by the province, some by the feds. Some by our professional standards. Um, but other things that we look at um are just something that we've imposed upon ourselves, whether that be through policy or through like a best practice. So there's a degree of mandate there that that's interesting to look at when you're looking at these reallocation opportunities. And the other one that's interesting is reliance on the county for provision, and it I kind of hinted at it earlier that there may be some things that we're doing. Um, that, you know, could be something that the private marketplace could do, could be something that uh maybe a community association does for us. Um, but when you look at, when you add this criteria over and above the results. Um, you know, it it does take some effort to get there. But there's some really interesting things that happen um when you look at overall scoring and and that value piece is enhanced. Um, when you add this criteria. Um, specific recommendations from the summary report, so I also provided a summary report, which I think was provided to you earlier as well. Um, communications, um, it it's it's an area that comes up, not just with you guys again, but across our sector. I understand there's a new policy that's coming. And so I would look closely to to that, to that communications planner policy, and I understand, actually, there's been a very recent um. Uh, new resource as well, so there's some exciting things that can happen here, but I would again always look to. Those future changes um aligning to our our strategic goals and pillars and and look to maximize the value, so there's a really big opportunity here. Um, as far as training goes, um, senior leadership, I think there's an opportunity for them to. You know, um, really up our strategic game, um, and some of the things that have come up come up earlier. Um, so there's some areas in like leadership, communications and budgeting that that some training um could happen, and this is mostly internally, like these are things that I think that we can. Um, we can do in house. Um, again, I was talking about with your most senior operator to train others so that we can get a consistent level of of performance. Um, and again, just, it's going to become. You know, I hope I'm not becoming redundant here, but it is important. When we do look for time to train, it's going to come, um, you know, possibly from reallocating away from areas that are least aligned. Um, but I don't want to oversimplify that either, is that when we start doing these reallocations, there are going to be impacts in those areas, so. That'll come back to that more disciplined approach that we all have to have that. Um, you know, we are, there will be impacts to our services that we may need to answer to, but I think it's a very. Well substantiated answer if we say, you know, we're just looking to get the most bang for our buck, we're looking to reallocate to areas that are most aligned and most valuable. So one of the future recommendations here could be where we do see those adjustments, or. Say we come up with an initiative, training wise, that's going to take a lot of time and effort. Um, that would be an example, um, but anything new that has uh impacts on our. Time, effort and resources, we could consider capturing those recommendations in a kind of a business case format. Um, and we could leverage this same kind of scoring criteria and attach to those new things. Um, so that, you know, we would look to support the the very most valuable thing. And and maybe depending on, you know, what our budget is and what our time constraints are as far as capacity. Um, we may be only able to do one or two of those a year, um, and the others may show up in future years. So some more general recommendations, and some of these are going to be somewhat repetitive because I've I've probably mentioned them already. Um, it is my very sincere hope that this work starts influencing even this year's budget, so. Uh, when, I don't even know, maybe we've already started talking about the budget, I know when I was in Strathcona County, it seemed like an eighteen month process that just kept rolling and rolling, we talked about it all the time, but. Uh, seems earlier and earlier in the year, we talked about budget, the hope is this work that we're doing here will even impact this year's budget. Um, consider possibly added agri uh added capacity in those areas that were mentioned before. Um, I wonder if this work starts the idea of a made in Athabasca leadership program, so I've seen other. Leadership programs that are very specific and unique to our to their own culture. Um, whether we have some values work that we've done, or, you know, there's some really interesting things you can do with experiential learning, maybe take some. Some big program or some big project that we've done that we can learn from in house, but from a leadership lens. Um, I would suggest creating a suite of documents and a suite of plans to emulate that strategic planning framework I suggested, like a corporate plan and a department. Uh, series of department plans. Um, strongly consider implementing priority based budgeting. Um, in as far as reserves, if we're going to up our game strategically, and if we don't have them already, which I don't, I don't think we do. Uh, maybe there could be things like a strategic objectives reserve or a strategic initiatives reserve considered. And the other thing that I would hope is that we do have an election cycle hitting us right away. Um, it would be really great if somehow the this work showed up in that next um strategic planning session with council. Um, because I think this alignment piece has, there's two pieces to it, of course. Um, council telling administration what they feel. Um, the pillars and goals are to be aligned to. Um, and then administration responding accordingly. Uh, but I think it would be helpful for council if the next iteration of council, if they knew, um, you know, what we were trying to align to right now. They would see the things and the, you know, that we're doing and how well they aligned. That might inform them on, well, maybe we need to rethink the things that we have um administration aligning to, because there just seems to be a little bit of a mismatch. Um, in their perspective, so just some some thought around including that in some way in the next um. Strategic planning session with the new council.
Awesome.
So with with that, I'm certainly open to any questions that you that you have, and thank you for your. Your attention for what what turned out to be a pretty lengthy conversation.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you very much for the the thorough uh report and the summary that you have provided to us and your presentation here. Um, I know the one thing that popped out when you had said a hundred and seventy four services, I knew there was a great deal of services, but it's nice to have that number. Um, identified and gives the public a bit of an idea on how much um goes on in the county. Go ahead, please, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, a hundred and seventy four services is a lot, like that's a lot under especially one umbrella. Um, I did expect to see an inventory of the services currently being provided, though. Um, just wondering when. We can expect to see that list and how they're aligning or how they were scored, that kind of thing, I think. All members of council, that's one of the things that we were really looking forward to seeing was the actual list and seeing. Kind of how they were prioritized or how they aligned with our strategic plans.
So I think the the conversations with individual areas, so they all have their individual list right now. Um, but uh the way it's it has typically shown up with other um municipalities that I've worked with is they would take the work now. And it would show up um on a website in a in a really visual way for both. Council and for the public to see, wow, look at all the different things that we're we're doing, right? So I expect, you know, in in very near term. That you'll see that list, and not only will you see it, but your public will see it as well.
Hey, thank you very much. Is there anyone else with any other comments or please go ahead, Councilor Hall?
Thank you, Kelly, for this uh work so far, it's Brian speaking. Is there a, is there a next step now with this work, or is this it?
My involvement, um, this is it, but certainly there are numerous next steps, I think, that could be taken. Um, I think your your C A O has already been contemplating. You know, what that strategic planning framework looks like, because in those series of recommendations, both with the with, you know, those twenty eight that came up. Um, here, but individual department um recommendations. Um, I fully expect that you'll see, you know. Year by year, all of the different things that they're going to be building in plans. Will be related in some way, shape or form to these recommendations. So whether that be, you know, we're going to tackle a commu- not communications, because you've already done that, you know, this is going to be coming up as far as asset management. Um, you know, you may see one service area and decide we need to go further, we need to dig deeper, so. Um, you know, approach a subject matter expert in that area. To flush out with more detail what it is you were doing, like following greater operators or raiders around, seeing how much time they're spending in different areas. Seeing how well that aligns to those plans that are going to be coming forward, so I think this is uh. I think your term is, I think you suggested a first step, yes, this is a first step. Um, but I also would say it is an important first step. Um, before we can go down the road of asking more, um, you know, more granular questions or more specific questions, we needed to know. With some certainty what it is that we were doing. Um, we needed to understand it better internally and externally. Um, but I would really, really strongly encourage leveraging that work in the alignment um and time allocation. You guys are one of very few that have that as a tool in your toolbox now, and it can be very powerful um going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else who would like to weigh in here? Um, as has been mentioned, this is kind of our first step and and our first look at what's happening, and of course, this work will continue. Um, and I'm sure we'll be seeing more and more information coming forward as that work happens. Um, is there anyone else that would like to weigh in? No? Well, Mr. Rudek, thank you very much uh for being with us here today and and for giving us the information you have and the work that has been done. Um, it definitely sets um, you know, a pace for uh everyone, a roadmap, pretty much for everybody to go forward and really uh continue the the work that that um. We're anxious to see uh happen, I think the level of service has been uh review has been on our uh radar for some time. So we really appreciate seeing this here today and um going forward for sure.
Hey, thanks to everyone there, I I would be remiss if I didn't say how. It's been a real pleasure, uh, sometimes these can be a little bit of a more, I wouldn't say contentious, but um, this has been um. Uh, a very enjoyable experience. I think you guys all have your um community passion uh came came forward, both administration and council. Um, and those that are um looking for reelection, I wish you luck and and thank you for putting your name forward um. For uh, you know, extended public service, it's been my pleasure to to work with you guys.
Awesome, thank you so very much, we uh look forward to hopefully being here to continue this good work, you. All right, is there um no further, okay, we will say goodbye for now and uh safe travels to you and thanks again.
Be well, thanks, everyone, bye now.
So, yep, for sure, yep, thank you, thank you again. Take care, um, if we could take a recess uh for probably ten minutes, please, folks, so everybody can have a a moment to breathe and and do their stretch their legs and personal convenience, thank you. Fire response cost recovery. From my understanding, we do have an amendment on the table to change the title of the policy from fire response cost recovery to fire response service fees. And we also, Council Anderson had put forward the recommended motion. We have a, we were having a little bit of a conversation, of course. Mr. Cromwell brought some information forward from the public as well, just so everybody knows where we're at. I'll just quickly weigh in on a few things. I do believe in some of the, what we heard this morning, there are definitely some misconceptions in understanding the policy. And I know the original policy that we had charged for everything. And so this policy, I believe, really gives us the parameters to work within and does a lot beneficial. It's very beneficial to, I think, to our residents. I do agree that the title, cost recovery, or the phrase cost recovery, does create a bit of excitement because people think that's one hundred percent in a cost recovery, and that's simply not the case. I think it's also worth noting, we have, when we look at our budget for fire protection, our expenses are two million nine hundred eighteen thousand and seven hundred in our budget. And when we look at our sale of service for fire service billing, we budget only for a hundred and forty thousand. We're currently sitting at, at the end of July, when we look at our financial report here later, forty-three thousand seven hundred and eight. And what that comprises of is one very large commercial and two very small residential. So our services billing compared to our actual expenses is far from cost recovery, far from it. I mean, we we hardly even put a little drop in the bucket. And we also look at our reserves at five hundred thousand this year to put towards that replacement of all those aging equipment. Because once it's purchased, doesn't mean we have it for life. We have to continually make sure that that equipment is functioning and doing well and doing what we need to do. And with regards to the human related and the conversation that we had last time, I believe you hit it bang on with what council had said in the in the policy. I don't think that there was anything that's missed unless someone else has something else to say there. And I agree that the the seventy-five hundred dollar cap, I think, are average. Can you tell us again what the average was? I believe it was under ten. I couldn't remember.
Madam Chair, it the average is under ten. We were kind of falling right around that seventy-five hundred dollar mark. The ones this year, we had one that was at forty-four hundred dollars and one came in just over eight thousand, so.
Right.
Of the smaller invoices we had.
And that's a cap. That doesn't mean that they're gonna go out there and charge seventy-five hundred dollars for every single one. It's a cap. It will all depend on what the services were needed as to what would be charged. So I really encourage the public to review the budget and to reach out to clear up any misconceptions that they may have. We're definitely here to answer those questions and do the best that we can. And I will quit talking. Go ahead, please, Deputy Rehman.
Yeah, I I actually absolutely agree with you regarding regarding what we asked for and what happens here. I wanna commend administration, especially the the chief for bringing this forward just due to the fact that it just makes it clear instead of sitting back. We've been sitting around this table as counselors for four years. And to my recollection, I think we've had two, maybe three people come in and and appeal their charges. Which I think is absolutely amazing, because I know we've had more than two or three fires. And so that tells me that what administration has been doing for the last four years. And let me go back to the last probably twenty, twenty-five years that I can think of has been doing exactly what's wrote in this in this policy. It's just they put it in writing. Every fire gets investigated. If you have an issue with the fire, if you have issues with the charge. Administration I know looks at it. I've been on fires that that with my background again, that that this has been looked at and and charges have been dismissed or cut down or or for on for many reasons. So this is just put into writing now for better understanding and 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 I I again, I commend Chief Shalapai on the job that he's done and and the job that he will be doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
I a hundred percent agree. As I said, I totally agree with this policy. You nailed it. You know, our delegations are open to our public if there is someone that would like to appeal. I think it has the great bones of a great policy. That is our job. And I think I'll be in support of it.
Thank you. Councilor Hall.
I appreciate the clarification. The billing is is not a new thing. It's something that we've been doing. And I and I think, you know, as we consider the perspectives on this discussion, I think we've done as council and the policy, it's important that we do things that both encourage and make compliance easy at the beginning. And and I think that's been one of the the paths that our administration has taken as it relates to permits of all kinds. We try to get, make the compliance. It's easy to do the right thing. And and this is set up, in my view, to also not reward non-compliance. And so I think, you know, I I kind of view the 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 limits and the the response charge is kind of like a deductible on your insurance, too. Like you, I don't accept that because you've paid taxes, everything comes for free. We pay insurance on our vehicles and we pay groceries and, you know, we're never saying to Councilmen, we've never been to the grocery store and they've said today's on us because you bought here for thirty years. So like from from the perspective, I I think this can help encourage people to call incidents in to make sure where they minimize the cost and get the crews out there as quickly as possible to get it out so that it goes from a small dollar or stays at a small dollar rather than goes to a big dollar. And so the the billing is important. I would probably have, well, I still would support a slightly higher cap to be slightly higher than the average. But won't propose an amendment. But I I do think where billing occurs there or without billing, you don't have an incentive to follow the rules. And it's important we we have that. The question that I had for Chief Shalapai and for, I guess, my colleagues to consider is, do we want to consider distinguishing between items or incidents that are both with and without a permit? So if if you have a permit for for a burn and it does get out of hand, but you follow the rules, do we want the cap to apply? And we want to treat that different to the moment where you don't have a permit and you just go burn anyway? And I I think that that's worth our our consideration.
If if I may, and and just for clarity, when you mention the permits, does it not mention on the permit itself that if it gets away on you, you're kind of on your own? I I can't remember, so I'll just leave that with you.
Madam Chair, I can't exactly recall what's all in the full page of dialogue on the back of the permit, but there are some cautionaries in there. We are looking at revising our in the near future as well, something we've ensured is covered there as well. In relation to the question, it would counsel all both complying with some
and I, because I, you know, I look at this and if there's a an accident of some kind, whether it's a house fire or or whatever, in the human related category, we cap it. But if you've done the right things and we follow throw that might might also be reasonable and help to to encourage, which is why I had the preamble about importantly, we make it easy to comply and we encourage people to do the right things. Because, you know, we with permits, we have some some is it safe and then follow up after the fact to make sure those those spots have cooled. And if you just bear with me, I'm just looking at my notes. The other question I think I had is I just wondered if I was hoping Council Cromwell would tell us who the author of the letter that we listened to was from.
As emailed to all of council, the private letter from Mr. Randall.
All right. Thank you so much. So no amendments coming from Council Hall regarding permits. We can revisit that. All right. Council Captain. All right. Thank you so much. So no amendments coming from Counselor Hall regarding permits. We can revisit that. All right. Counselor Capitan.
Um, I just wanted to echo uh Counselor Hall's um sentiment in, in the idea of, of having uh perhaps a lower cap for those who have gone through the process of procuring a permit and understand that that could be an administrative nightmare as well. But um I do support this policy wholeheartedly. I don't necessarily support the number. I, on the opposite side, would like to see a lower cap if we are just choosing a number. I know in other municipalities, some are higher, some are lower as well, and we often compare ourselves to our neighboring municipalities. But um I don't, as you mentioned to yourself, uh, the amount of cost recovery to budget is such a drop in the bucket is the community questioning the number because it was just presented as, as it was without any real explanation other than an average of cost. So if we were going to revisit anything, that's what I would look at, lowering that cap. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Is there amendment or just a discussion? Okay. Counselor Cromwell.
All right. So before I begin my ninety-second timer, there were two questions that were asked in the first round that have not been answered. Uh, how does this apply to non-county residents who are the cause of a fire on non uh provincial highway? So example, again, like said, an ATV or the cuts through your land catches your field on fire. How do you prove that that was not you and how does the resident not get billed for that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Cromwell, there's, there's really two questions there. Um, so first, first and foremost, if we aren't able to determine the cause of the fire, so if ATVs came through, um, we have to prove it was the ATVs. If it was undetermined, that would be a non-billable fire. As per, we've classified that under uh four point three point.
Seven.
Seven.
Right.
But uh in four point, uh, pardon me for one second here. I want to make sure I don't misspeak. Um, four point three point four, should the cause of incident be undetermined or natural causes invoicing should not be pursued? So if we're unable to determine the cause definitively of as an ATV, there would not be pursued invoicing.
I, I, perhaps I misspoke then. We, we know it was an ATV. You have the ATV tracks, but it was somebody cutting through your land. It was not the landowner. It was clearly an ATV. They have an ATV in their shop. They have ATV tracks in their yard from their usage. But it was not their ATV with somebody trespassing on their property, cut through the field, caught it on fire and buggered off. That I think I'm talking about.
Well, we'll just sort of a little bit of language, um, kind of pull back a little bit on that. But um with regards to, um, I think what uh we're all saying is that if it cannot be proven, it will not be billed.
Uh, that's correct, Madam Chair. We, if it's questionable, we're not going to bill. We're going to err on the side of caution uh as administration currently does, and if we, we cannot be definitively certain on who caused it, um, we're not going to shoot first, ask questions later. Um, for folks that reside outside the municipality, we will pursue cost recovery if we can. Um, again, if we can determine a person, our enforcement team can reach out, we can collect information, we can try and send an invoice to their home residence, and I am aware that administration does have a collections agency as on, on uh retainer now as well. So we do have a few different options in terms of recovering those costs. But that's a scenario we'll uh have to explore as we implement this.
And I also will add, I think administration and um our fire chief and department has been extremely fair with regards to invoicing, um, and I don't believe that they're overzealous and taking advantage of situations at all. I think they are very sympathetic and compassionate and are definitely doing what they need to do to uh lessen the burden. Okay, are we good? This will be the Second Amendment.
That human-related fire that are not intentionally set, proven not to be negligent are capped.
You put your microphone on.
Thank you very much. I apologize about that. An amendment that human-related fires that are not intentionally set and proven not to be negligent are capped at five thousand dollars. So from seventy five hundred to five thousand, because I know you're not going to agree to zero.
So you would like to change the current, I'm just going to find it in the policy.
Page fifty-three.
Thank you.
In your current agenda under guideline, human-related fires are currently set to cap at seventy five hundred.
Um, it's not page fifty-three. Can we try another page, please? Oh, here we go. Guidelines, under the guidelines on page fifty-four, human-related fires, seventy five hundred cap.
It's page fifty-three in my agenda.
Um, I have page, I have donations as page fifty-three.
Okay, well, the paper in my hand says fifty-three.
Okay, so page fifty-four, you would like to change the human-related fires to be a five thousand cap rather than a seventy five hundred cap.
Correct. I'd like it to be zero, but I know that won't pass.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think, go ahead, please, Counselor.
I'm lost on what clause we're amending. I, like, I don't actually understand what.
The human-related uh cap, which was seventy five hundred, so that would be on page fifty-eight, four point three point five. If an incident is determined to be human-related, response charges shall be capped at seventy five hundred. The amendment is for five thousand.
And so we're going to take a minute to talk about that.
Sorry.
We, we, could we spend a minute to talk?
Would you like to talk about it?
I, I, well, okay, I'll start. I think it's a mistake. Seventy five hundred, like, the fines are maximums, not minimums. And so by dropping the minimum down, you, you take away, you, you water down the potential impact. And um, and so it's not, when we look at our averages, um, th- these are, these things are designed to encourage uh the right behavior. And um, and I think having it at the higher amount is prudent. And uh, you know, history will tell us that it's not been overzealously used, and so I don't think that there's a reason to, to meddle with that particular item.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Chamsick.
I agree with Counselor Hall. Um, I think that uh the seventy five hundred cap, like I said, is we're about building a good policy for the future councils as well. And it's a, a cap, not a prerequisite, so.
Awesome. That's okay. Thank you. And I also um would like to just quickly mention that that number that was chosen wasn't just pulled out of the air. Um, it is based on an average, and uh I feel that that's extremely fair. Anybody else? All right. I think we should go forward then, um, before lunchtime to have that conversation about the amendments. So on the Second Amendment to mend four point three point five from uh if an incident is determined to be human-related, response charges shall be capped at five thousand rather than seventy five hundred. If we're ready to go for that amendment, there's no further discussion. All right. All those in favor? One, two, and opposed. We have eight people here, so that would be six opposed. So six and two, that amendment fails. The second, the First Amendment, Counselor Chams, pardon me, oh, Counselor Chamsick. Um, would like to put the amendment forward for the Fire Response Cost Recovery Policy Title to change to Fire Response Service Fees. And I just will quickly note that does match what it is in the budget as well, so it just kind of makes it consistent, so I'm in favor. Um, if we're ready to go on that particular amendment, no discussion. All those in favor? I believe there's no opposed, so that's eight and O. That amendment for, is passed. So on the Counselor Anderson, as the recommended motion, the council adopts policy ninety one oh five, Fire Response Cost Recovery with the policy name changed to be Fire Response Service Fees.
Can I have final word before?
Oh, absolutely.
For sure. Sorry for cutting in. I thought you were just going to call it, so. Um, I feel that the policy draft included in our agenda package accurate, really accurately reflects the conversations we had, we've had around this subject. We have made some really positive changes. We now have a flat rate for the first hour of response, which means that our um, our fire response teams are not going to be vilified for showing up with too much. And I feel like we've had, we've seen before where that's happened, and now we're fixing that, we're correcting that so that they can roll and have all hands on deck and then assess the scene once they get there. We also have no billing for natural causes. I think we've all heard that nobody should be receiving a bill from a lightning strike or something that unfortunately happens due to nature. There's a cap being implemented for the human-related fires, which we currently did not have. And I think that's something that we should all be really proud of, is having that cap. No cap for the human-caused fires. And I know we've talked about whether maybe not there should be a differentiation between whether they had a permit in advance or not have a permit. And I think that that's one thing that I really wanted to point out is we've ensured that there's a clear appeal process. And those residents who had a permit or didn't have a permit are more than welcome to bring that in as part of their appeal if they so wish. And I do think that councils will take that into consideration. Um, but there is a clear appeal process and there is a clear way that they can bring that to the table and have that heard, so. Um, overall, I'm very in favor of the policy, and I think it's moving us in the right direction.
Thank you. I believe that we are ready for the question now. Awesome. Thank you so much. So on uh Counselor Anderson, would like to move the motion that council adopts policy ninety one oh five, Fire Response Cost Recovery with the title changed Fire Response Service Fees Policy. Does that make sense? As amended. Thank you. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor? We have seven and opposed, one. Seven and one, that carries. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Um, so I didn't want to muddy the waters on, on the approval of the policy, but I'm wondering if we can test uh through motion, a motion um, that I'd like to propose to direct administration to bring us their advice on a revised four point three point six to distinguish between incidents both with and without a permit with a view to, to limit billing where a permit is in place.
Okay.
So I'm not, I want, would like to hear their advice. Come back and um, and if, and then test that with the table if we want to move ahead or if we don't.
Okay. Does everybody understand the um motion on the floor?
I can read it again.
It'd be awesome, please, and thank you, and we'll make sure that Leah gets it as well.
To direct administration to bring uh their advice on a revised four point three point six to distinguish between incidents with and without a permit with a view to limit billing where a permit is in place.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Ms. Leah? Okay? If everybody's, does anybody have a discussion? No? Okay. On that motion that uh Counselor Hall read, all those in favor? And opposed? Seven and one. Thank you very much. All right, next. Oh, I apologize. So we're at a six and two? Yes. Six and two. Sorry. Thank you, Leah. All right, we are on now to item seven point one, which is Bylaw zero zero six, twenty twenty-five road closure uh from the public hearing this morning, page sixty-seven of your agenda. All right. Um, I believe Counselor Anderson, you wish to um comment on this?
I'd like to move the recommended motion, please.
To move the recommended motion, and that is to direct administration to forward, uh, to forward road closure by law zero zero six, twenty twenty-five to the Minister of Transportation for approval. Is there any discussion? No? Are we ready for the question? All those in favor? And opposed? You have to vote. You're here now. You have to vote.
No, she doesn't. She's not allowed to vote.
Oh, for the public hearing. Thank you. Yes.
But it should be noted in the minutes that she's.
Exactly. I apologize. It's public hearing. That's why you move back. Got it? Yep. All right. So we have seven, and I'm sorry, can we raise hands again, please, for the, all right, so it's seven and O. Thank you. All right. I appreciate it. Yep. Thank you. Public hearing is different. Absolutely. All right. Seven point two is next, Bylaw zero two zero dash twenty twenty-five traffic bylaw, page seventy-three of your agenda. The recommendation here is that Bylaw zero two zero twenty twenty-five be given first reading. Um, would administration like to, like to weigh in on this one?
Uh, Madam Chair, as discussed at the committee of the whole, this was a uh a labor of love. We put a lot of effort into modernizing the bylaw, addressing some key specific concerns that uh currently we didn't have the tools to address. And we look forward to uh council's feedback on it.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there, just curiosity, is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to, with, with council's consent, be able to go through three readings on this one? Or would you just prefer to have first reading?
Uh, Madam Chair, administration has no concern with going for uh all three readings today.
Okay.
But we look to the chair.
Perfect. All right, Counselor Chamsick.
Uh, as recommended for first reading, please.
All right. So is there any discussion at first reading? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I did have one question for clarification. On Schedule A for penalties, five point one one is unattended livestock creates hazard or nuisance on highway. Um, the fines, are they per animal or per incident?
Through the Chair to Counselor Anderson's per incident.
Go ahead.
Am I amended?
Would you like it amended? You're okay? All right. Is there any further discussion on first reading? I think we're ready to go forward with uh Counselor Chamsick would like to uh go forward with the recommendation that Bylaw zero two zero twenty twenty-five be given first reading. If we're ready for that, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, so that's eight and O. Um, if council, yes?
I'll give second reading.
Thank you. Deputy Reed Minz would like to go forward with second reading that Bylaw zero two zero, zero two zero twenty twenty-five, of course, be given second reading. Is there any conversation? Nope. I'm ready for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. I believe that's eight and O and no opposed. Do we have unanimous consent to go forward with third reading? So moved. So Counselor Hall would like to move, go forward with unanimous consent to third reading. All those in favor? Thank you. I don't see any opposed, and we will move right on to third reading. Counselor Cromwell would like to give their reading that Bylaw zero two zero twenty twenty-five be given third reading. All those in favor? Assuming there's no conversation. Eight and O. No boast. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Next bylaw, zero two one twenty twenty-five, the procedural bylaw amendment on page one oh six of your agenda package, item seven point three. And I believe there we go. Uh, the recommendation, of course, is to be given third and final reading. Is there any uh way in from administration on this one? Nope. And so we have discussion for third reading. Are we ready for the vote? All right, Counselor Cromwell, would like to go ahead, that Bylaw zero two one dash two zero two five be given third and final reading. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and two opposed? Six and two. Thank you. Next bylaw is seven point four, uh, which is zero two three dash twenty twenty-five, cancellation of plan subdivision on page one thirteen of your package. The recommended uh motions here are to give all three readings. Is there, administration would like to weigh in?
Um, I don't have anything further to add, Madam Chair, but if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Awesome. Thank you. So we're, go ahead.
I, I just want to double check um my understanding of the procedure, which is if we were splitting this into two parcels, we would have a public hearing?
Um, Madam Chair, uh, through, for Counselor Hall's question, it, if they would be splitting it, it would have to go through the subdivision process, which would go through the uh subdivision authority for approval. Um, and there is no public hearing required for that.
And so the second question, which I may have missed, but have the, was there a reaction from the neighboring properties? Did we consult with them on it, their object? It was late when I looked on, so I apologize if you wrote it and I missed it. When we're making changes in a neighborhood, I guess I wonder, is it our practice to consult with the neighbors and get their feedback as well?
Um, through the chair, uh, for Counselor Hall's question, the adjacent landowners were not notified of this one. We were just, uh, we, the request was submitted and we prepared the bylaws, so adjacent landowners were not sent any letters.
And, and just to confirm, that's not a requirement?
No.
Thank you.
Right.
Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I have a question about the future land use of this property. Changing it from two parcels to one, does that limit the potential for development of future structures?
Um, Madam Chair, on the subject of the council, it would actually increase.
Um, Madam Chair, it would actually increase. The man off, sorry.
Oh, I did the opposite. I turned it off instead of one. Um, Madam Chair, members of council, it it would almost do the opposite. If you have a larger parcel, it would increase the setbacks and the acres on the on the land, so you would be able to uh potentially have more development as long as it meets the requirements of the land use by law for for setbacks and distances from structures.
And I, go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Sorry, one other question then. If we're subdividing adjacent to water bodies, and I know this is the opposite. Do we, is it not normally in the practice to to pu- put an environmental reserve against the water and and if that's true, then why wouldn't we also do it if we're making adjustments to title? In the other direction?
I'll ask Krista to confirm, uh, but my understanding is it's only at the time of subdivision can you take the environmental reserve, and in this case where it's a consolidation, it's not a subdivision, it's done through bylaws, so um, exactly that, though, if it was the opposite and we were subdividing one lot into two, they would have to dedicate the environmental reserve um, adjacent to the water body. Um, but in this case, the municipal government act doesn't require it when you're consolidating the lots.
Thank you. You're okay? Answers question, okay. I'm, and just quickly for my own uh clarification, should the ownership uh of this property change? Um, and it's consolidated, can the new owner then subdivided again?
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, as long as it meets the requirements of reland use by law with minimum parcel size and all that, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So is any further discussion on the first reading? All right, is anyone who would like, I don't think anybody owned that one. Who would like to own first reading? Counselor Chamsik? Would like to give first reading of by law zero two three twenty twenty-five? If we're ready for that, all those in favor? Okay, I believe we don't have any opposed, so, oh, you're opposed, so seven and one? So that moves us on to discussion for second reading. Is there any further conversation for second reading? No, I think we're ready to go. Who would like to own that one? Counselor Anderson would like to give a second reading of by law zero two three twenty twenty-five? If there's no further discussion, ready for the vote, all those in favor? We have six and those are, pardon me, seven and those opposed, one? So I think we're just not probably going to go forward.
You should test it.
You should test it? I'll test it. All right. Seven and one, seven and one. Do we have unanimous consent to go forward?
I'll make the motion to look for unanimous.
You would like to do that? All right, so Counselor Cromwell would like to submit by law zero two three twenty twenty-five for third, or pardon me, for unanimous consent to do fine, third and final reading. If we're ready for that, all those in favor? He's testing. Very interesting. So we go forward to a third reading? Is there any discussion? All right, who would like to give their reading? Counselor Kapitaniak would like to give third reading of by law zero twenty-three twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Okay, I believe we have seven and opposed, seven and one. Thank you for helping to move it forward, Counselor Hall. All right, we are at um item number seven point five, page one nineteen of your agenda, by law zero two four twenty twenty-five road allowance licensing agreement. Would administration like to uh weigh in here?
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, uh just to make a comment that uh the license, the by law will allow um, the applicants to proceed with the peat harvesting within the road allowance, which is what they receive development approval for. Um, so this is just making sure that all of the wheels in motion are compliant and aligned with each other.
Hey, thank you. Is there any discussion at first reading? Go ahead, Counselor Minz.
Just wondering, okay, so so they're going to come in there and they're going to remove all the peat out of out of the road allowance and uh, so when they're done, what are we going to have left? Are we going to have a lake?
Madam Chair, members of the council, part of their water act approval is reclamation and they would have to reclaim it to pre-development stage.
Oh. Interesting.
They'd have to put the peat back?
Dirt.
Perfect.
Interesting.
Thank you.
So when it's kind of peaty and and more of a wetland, what happens then? Because I'm seeing some other areas that aren't reclaimed, they're turned into wetlands.
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, I I'm not very familiar with what the spec- speculations are for this in particular, especially for the peat harvesting, but it is part of the reclamation and Alberta environment. Um, they'll have to meet those requirements and make sure that because Alberta environment is the one who approved the reclamation plan, so they would have to make sure that it meets that.
Interesting. Thank you. Awesome. All right. Is there any further discussion on, go ahead, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Um, in accordance with policy thirty-five twenty-five, it says that following an initial review, administration will prepare policy by law authorizing the applicants to use and occupy the road allowance only if the applicant is the registered owner or leasing of land adjacent to both sides of the subject road allowance. And I'm just wondering, um, they aren't in this case, so have the landowners who are adjacent to the road allowance been notified?
Madam Chair, members of council, the uh notifications were done at the development permit uh stage. Uh, so for the road allowance, uh, to answer Counselor Anderson's question, no, there was no notification for that. Uh, the peat harvesting company did receive the approvals from the landowners to do the harvesting on site and received the approval from the crown to do the harvesting on the crown lands, so um for this particular by law, no, it was not notified, but it was uh through the development permit, the approvals and the authorizations were granted.
Thank you.
And um, I understand on the parcels that are being harvested, but the parcels to the east of the road allowance that runs north-south, I'm wondering if those landowners were also notified?
Sorry, Madam Chair, members of council, um, I I can't confirm that. I'd have to uh check the mapping. I don't have it on hand if if that is crown land to the east. But no, they were not notified during this.
Just like to say that I'm not comfortable waiving the requirement for a public hearing if we haven't even notified the adjacent landowners that we're doing this, so.
Would you like to make a motion to do a public hearing? Is that something we can do?
I think you have to pass first reading before you can schedule the public hearing. I'm just curious.
All right, go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Don't know, I mean, if how much discussion we want for the motion, but obviously I assume we will see a first reading motion. Um, so in reading this, I uh also was looking at policy thirty-five twenty-one around clearing of undeveloped road allowances. So I'm wondering if uh we're able to be provided where the timing of when council received uh notice and approved of the clearing of the road allowance per that policy? Like, how did we get to where we are? And then I have another follow-up question.
It's waiting for him.
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, uh in the file, when it was given to me, the approval from infrastructure services was granted for the undeveloped road allowance, the the development within that on July fifteenth, um. I'm not sure if it came to council before then. I don't have, I didn't have that information. Um. Krista, did you have something? Sorry.
So this, this um peat operation was picked up by Aurora. Um, it was already developed. And they have been working towards compliance. So they came to us for a development permit application. That's my understanding, so they.
Uh, you just said picked up, so that there's been sort of a change.
Purchased, yeah, there was a change in ownership.
Yeah, July of last year.
No. But but it was already developed. When Aurora purchased it. And then they've been working towards compliance with us and environment.
So the questions that come up for me, I guess, I'm wondering if we have a valid development permit? Given that the ro, the the request to do that must be made in writing to council uh prior to doing anything. And uh, and then if approved, then an approval will will come place, come come forward. The other, I think, question that comes up for me, and it's based on sort of an interpretation of this policy where if we're salvaging trees or merchantable timber, which I think, you know, represent a natural resource. There's a uh a payment for those, either to the crown or to the municipality, but it looks like to the crown. So the question then comes, if we are licensing the road allowance to harvest a natural resource that has market value, who gets paid for that resource? Are they issuing a payment to the crown for that resource, or is it just bonus land that they get to farm for no money?
Madam Chair, members of council, I'd have to look into that. I'm not sure where the revenue goes as my understanding from the policies, administration just uh uh accepts the application or takes in the application fee uh and then proceeds with the bylaw, so I I'll have to confirm that for council.
Okay, you're okay? Yeah, I thi- I somehow have it in my brain that the, if there's harvesting of of uh timber on an undeveloped road allowance, that that those dollars go back to the county, but I could be wrong.
The, it's the crown because the crown is the owner of the road allowance, or according to the um confirmation approval of tree removal for payment of timber dues, which I know we're not talking about timber, we're talking about peat, which I don't know what that used to be, maybe it used to be timber. Maybe not, I don't know what peat is. Um, goes back to the government and provided, so the, so the really the question comes if we're you know, if you're, if you're the landowner and the peat company is on your land harvesting, I assume that they get a lease payment annually. And that uh and that they get, you know, some some kind of payment for the harvesting of that resource, because no landowner is letting a peat company in on their land to harvest their peat boss for for nothing. And even though this is, you know, small amount of land, because if we're lucky, we're talking about a couple of acres, right, sixteen and a half feet by so it's a uh one, two, three acres? I don't, I just think we we have to get away from resource industries not paying the crown their share. Or at least are and again, it's a small amount of land and a small amount of money, so maybe administration's advice would be to just turn the other way and clean the mess up and move on, but I I think there are questions that we need to ask and at least to make a conscious choice.
Thank you. All right, is there any, go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Just thinking back to um other concerns that we've heard related to the licensing of road allowances. Uh, they usually come into play around fencing. But I'm wondering how, what conditions are in place, or are there any conditions in place to prevent drainage ditches from being installed on our road allowance? Um, like what, what is the requirement for access for the public? And are they allowed to just put in drainage ditches? Um, across our allowance, because are we, are we accepting some sort of liability by licensing it to them? Or is there a condition in place for that?
Sorry, Madam Chair, members of council, I'm just looking uh in the development agreement that we have with them.
Give me a second. We'll take that moment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's been enough questions raised. Um uh, I don't think administration would be offended if there was a tabling motion to bring it back to a future meeting.
Appreciate that. Embarrass you. Deputy, Deputy Reed Minz would like to table this or postpone this to another meeting, to the next council meeting? Postpone to the next council meeting? All right.
Could it just say to a subsequent council meeting?
To a subsequent council meeting, very good. So to postpone this item seven point five to a subsequent council meeting? If that's uh no further discussion on tabling or or postponing, so all those in favor? And I see no opposed. Thank you. We have five minutes before noon. Um, I'm pretty sorry. Lunch is here. Okay, um. I'm assuming we're going to have a conversation on this last one, so we'll break for lunch. And we are at eleven fifty-four. If we can return at eleven twenty, or pardon, pardon.
We have a big agenda. Can I propose we have a relatively short lunch so that we can get out of here? Um, while the calendar still reads the twenty eighth?
Does twenty-five minutes suffice for everyone? So yeah. Let's just come back at twelve twenty. Thank you.
Please turn to your seat. Pilot. Lee Tansit.
Ready, yeah? Alrighty. Alright, twelve twenty-four, we'll, we'll get started, twelve twenty-four. Uh, thanks, everybody. Welcome back from lunch. Um, we believe we tabled uh twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so bylaw zero two six, twenty twenty-five, seven point six, page one twenty-five of your agenda. This is recommended to give all three readings as well, and would administration like to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. So uh as follow-up to the uh new fire response service fees policy, um that work identified that we had some contradictory language in our fire services bylaw, specifically section twelve-six that put all appeals at the discretion of the C A O. So in order to align with the new policy and ensure that the process is clear and we're in alignment between the policy and bylaw, we had to bring forward a amending bylaw to uh match the language with all appeals over one thousand dollars coming to council. In opening up the amending bylaw, we have identified some housekeeping issues uh for when we passed the bylaw back in twenty twenty-three. Um specifically, in the penalty section, we had uh two that needed a little bit of clarification. We had uh it spoke to two acres. We don't issue permits uh but open burn permits on lots under two acres. In the bylaw, we actually reduced that in the final reading to one acre, but the penalty section still referred to two, so we had to make that amendment there. We had a numbering issue in section eleven when we uh again made the amendment during the uh adoption process and added in the exemption of uh emergency warning uh flares and scares. It pushed the numbering down, and unfortunately, in the bylaw, we did not catch a numbering error. So three subsequent bullets were numbered incorrectly, which translated into the fine section not aligning to the actual language. We also added, and I flipped the page, if you look, there's offenses under eight point five and eight point nine. When we passed the original bylaw, we did not put any offenses in the uh schedule regarding uh burning failure to comply with your burn permit. So as we applied the new bylaw, and we ran to situations where folks had permits, but they didn't comply with the permit, we actually didn't have provision to sort of going under a uh fire control or or issuing an order to the landowner. We didn't have any means of um remediating non-compliance with our permits. And we also did not have any offense for if we issue an uh an order, there was no specified penalty, so it'd be have have to go to court for us to actually uh process those through. And that had to do with non-compliance to uh to the to burning requirements. And then in thirteen nine point eight, uh the offense spoke to uh participate in activity prohibited by fire control order. Um, we've added in or fire ban just for clarity's sake, because a lot of folks uh don't associate fire control orders and fire bans. And lastly, when we passed the bylaw, we missed an antiquated bylaw from nineteen eighty-eight regarding fire permitting that the new fire services bylaw supersedes. So ultimately, this was brought forward to, again, fix the appeals section. But in doing so, we've identified some low-hanging fruit per se in terms of housekeeping in the uh twenty twenty-three bylaw.
Awesome. Thank you very much, uh Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Uh, on page number, and I feel like my page numbers are out for everybody. Page number one twenty-nine, twelve point six. I think that that needs to be changed to match the new title of the fire response service fee. Yes. Okay, um, just one question here about enforcement when we're talking schedule of fees on the previous page of penalties. Do our C P O have the authority to enforce the S P P A?
Through the chair, Counselor Cromwell, we do have the i- on our appointments, we have the Forest Act as well as the Forest Prairie Protection Act, both on our enforcement uh C P O appointments, and we work very closely with what sections we actually do enforce, so we're not uh, we're staying in our lane.
Just a a large part of our county is in the green zone to make sure that they are able to deal with that accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Look at that, under five minutes.
Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
I'll move first reading with the amendment to under twelve point six to reflect the current policy name, but assuming that, put first reading on the table.
Need things to reflect current policy name. Okay. Is there any discussion? Alrighty, so on um the amendment to uh twelve point six, was it? Yep, to reflect uh the current policy name. All those in favor? Pardon me, the motion to, thank you, I wrote amendment. Alright, so we'll reread that, the motion to uh reflect the current policy name in twelve point six. Yep, alright, all those in favor? Fantastic, and I see no opposed, eight and oh. On first reading, Counselor Chamsak would like to um, I'm assuming there's no further discussion for first reading or? Wonderful. No, we did the the motion.
We, we did first reading with the amendment of the title change in twelve point six is what I heard.
I wa- I sorry, I did it as a motion, and then there's the reading.
I moved first reading.
Okay, oh, very good, alright, pardon me.
With that language swapped to uh reflect the current title of the policy.
You did, you did.
So the first reading as a minute.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Leah, is that how you've got it in your minutes as well?
I have moved by Counselor Hall that bylaw zero two six, twenty twenty-five um be given first reading and reflect the current policy in item twelve point six.
Thank you. Current policy name, yep. Okay, awesome. Alright, does anybody like to have a discussion on second reading? You will do that? Your microphone is on, Counselor Cromwell, did you have, okay? If we're ready then for second reading, Deputy Reed Minz would like to uh give second reading that bylaw zero two six, twenty twenty-five be given second reading, be that good, no discussion, all those in favor? We have seven and one opposed, seven and one. Shall we test the, do we have unanimous consent? To go to third reading?
Yes.
Counselor Chamsak, we're going to test it. Alright, so the motion Counselor Chamsak would like to make is to move to second or to pardon me to go to third reading, all those in favor? Oh, and you were in favor, in favor, thank you, we have eight and oh. And then on third reading, Counselor Chamsak would like to uh move that bylaw zero two six, twenty twenty-five be give third, be given third and final reading, all those in favor? And opposed, seven and one. Thank you. We are now on to eight point one, which is the variance, financial variance report on page one sixty-one of your agenda. The recommendation here is, of course, to receive the July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five financial variance report and bank statement as information, but before we you'll move that, Counselor Minz. Deputy Reed Minz, which is probably deputy, um Reed Minz would like to move that, but is there any discussion? We're waiting a question. Don't forget your microphone.
Yes, thank you. Um, just under uh page one ninety-four. Uh, the road construction uh under contracted gravel haul, there's not very much money charged to that yet. We haven't got very, or we got lots in the budget, but not very much being charged. Is there a reason for that or? Because I know we got gravel on the ground.
Line twenty-two fifty-seven. Number was that? Which, which number, which line number was that?
Nine twenty-two fifty-seven?
Page one nine four.
Uh, through the chair to Deputy Mintz, we're gonna do more research for that. Uh, right now, it's sitting at fifty-one thousand, as you can see. Uh, we're gonna have to look with the departments and double-check and why is it underspent?
Perfect. Well, just thought I'd, I'd, I said, thank you very much.
Alrighty. Does anybody else have anything further than, go ahead, Counselor Anderson?
Sorry, just for clarification, that was one ninety-four of your agenda package?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was page thirty. Because it's page one ninety-three in mine, so.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we are actually off by one page number? Okay, just wondering, anybody else? Because I don't know what page I may be missing here.
Yeah, you're giving one nine four? I'm not sure what happened. Yeah, I I know Counselor Cromwell mentioned it earlier. We'll sort that out. We'll just work through this, right? We don't need to, so, okay. Does anybody else have anything to discuss on the, on the um? Yeah, financial variance? Alright, I'd like to say thank you very much for the report, appreciate it. Um, and you know, as we're just a month past halfway through the year, um, it'll be interesting to see how things play out, but it's looking good, so thank you very much for all the work. So on that, Counselor Deputy Reed Minz, pardon me, would like to receive the July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five financial variance report and bank statement as information. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And no opposed, awesome. Thank you. And we move to eight point two on page two oh five of your package. Um, this is with regards to um the count that council uh schedules uh special county, special county council meeting on October second uh that counts, counts, geez, that council cancels the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five and November eighteen, twenty twenty-five committee of the whole meetings, and that council reschedules the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five organizational meeting to October twenty twenty-five, or twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five um with department orientations to immediately follow, and that council reschedules the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular county council meeting for November thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Um, I just have a quick question on this one, and it would be the time, I'm assuming, for all of those would be nine thirty? Okay, so that's just to confirm that, and of course, we all know that um with the election coming as well as the R M A, there's need to make changes, so moved. Alright, so Counselor Cromwell would like to move the recommended, recommended motion. Is there any discussion? I don't want to read it again, it's a tongue, tongue twister for me. Um, is there any further discussion? Nope, alright, on that uh motion, the recommended motion from Counselor Cromwell, all those in favor? Brady and I see no opposed. Thank you, folks. Eight point, where are we at here? Eight point five. Uh, the A T B usage, page twenty twen- uh two hundred and twenty-one for most, um possibly two twenty for others, we'll have to find out what happened there. Is there a motion?
Motion to table until the next scheduled committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Motion to postpone to the next, okay, motion to postpone to the next committee of the whole meeting, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, four, and opposed. One, two, three, four, that fails. So we're not postponing. Though. So a a conversation can take place, or a motion can take place? Go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Well, then we'll be here to chat. So it's been no secret that there have been over time, more and more complaints about O H V's dirt bike side-by-sides on county roads, and how that impacts residents and travelers alike. And over time, we've talked about things like doing traffic counts where we inadvertently missed adding the A T V's dirt bike side-by-sides. We have options of posting speed limit signs for O H V's, changing the bylaw to keep O H V's in the ditch, uh make designated areas and where O H V's are permissible on county road. Even having a actual public hearing to talk about them is, you know, when, when we have our town hall meetings of the R C M P, that is one of the uh most engaging topics of discussion that we have. uh most engaging topics of discussion that we have. I've been sent twenty one videos by ratepayers of OHV's that are ripping up and down county roads, cutting through fields onto people's property. I spend time with my children out fishing and on any night you can have eight to ten in a row that are driving at very high speeds, cutting vehicles off on a bridge, cutting through private property, and we are, we are setting up people to fail and get injured. And I don't have a solution yet, and that's why it would be good to, to do a roundtable and talk about it, but we have to figure out a way to both be able to keep OHV's at a proper and respectable level while being fair to the ratepayers of the county. I'll give an example, in Wandering River, we have a beautifully built uh private OHV track that is fantastic for off-highway vehicles, dirt bikes, quad side by sides to go out and enjoy their time on the machines without tearing up the infrastructure of county roads, getting in the way of vehicles a- and being in that position of, of causing harm to themselves and to others. We have been fortunate that there have not been um many if any OHV accidents in the last few years, which is phenomenal. I know in years prior, uh, one year we had three people airlifted from OHV from quad accidents in this, I think of a period of about a month and a half. And you know, on behalf of the ratepayers in, in the north there, we, we have to find a way to, to make this work, I cannot and I'll take ownership here, I cannot figure out how to get a video from an Android that got sent to a Samsung, get on to here to play because technology does not like to talk to each other. The other part of that is a lot of the videos you can't show because when these ratepayers go up to the side of the road to their field and ask people to slow down, the, the language and attitude being portrayed through these videos are not for a public setting. But we have, we have ratepayers in our county that are having an issue and I'm not blaming our RV parks or campgrounds, I'm not blaming the vast majority, there are always those one or two people that sometimes eight in a row, but you know, that very small percentage that is causing the very loud majority of the problems, and right now I want to open it up for a bit of discussion, Madam Reeve, on how we can look at trying to help and solve that problem, that's why I thought a committee of the whole agenda might be more appropriate, but my peers want to do it now, let's get her done.
We do have a bylaw, an off-highway vehicle bylaw, and thank you for bringing this forward, I'm sure that we all experience this in every um corner of the county, um, we have these concerns, um, and of course municipalities have that um ability to make those decisions, you know, that there is the Traffic Act that um applies to provincial but does not necessarily apply to municipal, so we have the OHV bylaw, I can't remember what it is, twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen, I can't remember exactly what it is. Um, but it might be worth something that because it hasn't been looked at in some time to, to bring forward and, and um have a look at that. Um, I know in talking to uh previous council members, uh, when this policy, or when this bylaw was passed, um, the intent was mainly for agricultural use uh for ATVs uh on the roads, um, I don't know if that's something that you know, can be brought back to have that conversation, but that's up to council, um, and like to hear if anybody else has anything to weigh in on that. Go ahead, Counselor Wall.
Is there a motion on the table?
No, we're just kind of having that conversation since the motion uh postponed failed.
I'd like to make a motion to accept for information, we just had a strategic planning and service level um presentation saying that we need to stay on track and not get sideways on a lot of things, this is a pop-up issue. It's not part of our bigger plan right now, and I think if we're looking at putting up signage and all of the things, that's going to be a massive undertaking all over the county, so at, at this point, I think we just need to accept for information.
Receive. Accept is to adopt and agree with this. That's what accept is. To receive, okay, so the motion on the floor is to receive for information, Counselor Hall?
I, I feel like this sounds like more of an enforcement issue, and so I, I, I uh last meeting, we had something similar come up around golf carts and that got kicked out to a future strat planning meeting, and uh so I agree that this is um the, the, the term pop-up issue, it's, it's something that needs to be pushed out to a consolidated time where we can assess it in terms of priorities, but you know, it's, it's been put, submitted to this meeting, so um it's on the table for discussion here and I, I haven't heard from the RCMP uh that this has been an issue or from our bylaw in our committee, the whole reports, it hasn't struck me as something they've identified as a, as a, as an issue. So I'm um fully in support of receiving receiving it for information at this moment.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, um, we've heard from the RCMP, they didn't feel like the ATV usage in the Wandering River area was um specifically high compared to other areas, but twenty one videos being sent does seem I mean, it's a lot higher than, than number of zero videos that I've had sent to me, so I'm just wondering if these have all been reported to the RCMP or if um maybe during our budget, there's some sort of communications that we could add to encourage people to be reporting these instances to the RCMP so that they are uh their statistics are adequately reflecting the current, the existing situation.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? Go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
I gave other people a chance. You know, aside from what peers around the table say, it is not a pop-up issue, as we brought it up on more than one occasion, we've talked about it before, we've tried to do traffic counts that unfortunately didn't get done, so to say it is not a per, not part of our plan and a one-off issue, I do not accept and I think is really unrealistic of what is going on, I think Counselor Anderson has a great point, get some more communication out, I know when we've talked to the RCMP at the town halls sometimes getting things reported when they know that they're not going to get a response is hard, and that has been topic in many of the town halls and I wish uh some of my peers would have come out to that and heard the conversation from the ratepayers and from the RCMP and our CPOs about that as it is a very high topic in those rooms. I don't think it's something we should just put away and go, ah, we'll, we'll do that when we get a strat plan, has to be one of our top five. The whole point of sitting around those tables to deal with things that come up as they happen, you're not going to get every bit of our, our day on a strat plan, we do one day here and go, that's all we're going to focus on. That is, I think, extremely uh narrowed, narrow vision. And I don't want to see that just go away, we have the obligation to make proper changes that are for the betterment of the vast majority, and it will not take a, a big revision, it will not take mountains to talk about and find a solution that works for everybody. While respecting, you know, the campgrounds and, and parks that rely on, on tourism, what that does for a community that's not negated in here. We are talking about how can we enforce, how can we ensure the safety of the majority because of the actions of the minority are respected. And every landowner, every resident has the right to enjoy the the environment they chose to live in. And we're not doing justice.
Thank you, Deputy Reed Minz and then Counselor Chamsik?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know what kind of, I, I know what you're saying is to, to build a bylaw that, that I guess go back to the bylaw and, and re, redo the bylaw that and put in their respect, I don't know, because what you got here is you got a, you got people that aren't respecting other people, and how do you put that into a bylaw, I, I don't, without, without actually just banning ATVs and there's no way that's ever going to happen, so so I don't know how you would put in their respect in the bylaw. I, 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 that, that's my take on it right now off the cuff, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chamsik.
Um, yeah, it's a, a very tough thing to be able to enforce, some of us have been at those town halls across the county and you know, we've heard some of the concerns, uh, perhaps one of the things that um you could do, also hope um encourage us to post the bylaw on your social medias or whatever, and encourage those uh electorate, I guess, to report to that RCMP as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Alright, so on the motion from Counselor Wallack to receive for information, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposed. Six and two, thank you. Alrighty, next item up, we have the uh land advisory group, which is eight point seven on page two twenty five of your package, and that is to appoint a council member to the landscape advisory group. Go ahead, please, Counselor Hall.
I would make the motion to appoint a council member to the landscape advisory group at the next organizational meeting.
Okay. Just writing that down, awesome, okay? And is there any discussion? On Counselor's Hall's, Hall's motion to appoint uh a counselor at the next organizational meeting, all those in favor? And opposed, eight and O, thank you. Alright, eight point nine on page two twenty eight, eight, uh, eight point nine is service levels review presentation. Just get there. Sorry? Yeah, it was added, yep. Alright, and the recommendation here on the presentation for the service levels review is to receive the presentation for information and provide feedback. Alright, who would like to begin? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, I, just wondering, like, I was disappointed not to see the inventory list today, that's what I was expecting to see today, so I'm just kind of wondering when we'll see that and if we're going to have an opportunity to sit down and talk about what our current service, service level is and how they align to the strat plan. Um, or if, like, what, what should we expect, because I just feel like my expectations didn't quite align with what was happening today.
Appreciate that, thank you, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to bring back, um, soon as I get a final copy, I don't have a final copy of the entire list, so soon as I get a final copy, because he's still working with each of the departments to refine them, so as soon as I get one, I'm going to bring it to council, um. A continuing theme that we keep looking at, and I'm going to refer to the previous item you talked about, uh, is the lack of a level of service policy for some of our most important services. Um, even, even applies to enforcement, there's no level of service policy, so um basically it's complaint-based, so uh, we have a lot of work to do coming out of that, um, but you'll be surprised to see the types of services that we have that you might not have been aware that we actually do, um, in a previous place I worked, council didn't know that um we owned a theater. And we only did a service review and we said, by the way, we own a theater, and council's like, well, how do we get rid of that, um, so, uh, it it's amazing.
We run a circus.
So anyways, I, I'm not aware we have a theater, uh, but we'll bring it back, have, open a discussion. We'll try to get as much done on, at the end of this term with this, but it's probably one that's going to be punted to the next council, but at least you can give us your thoughts and you can set it up for the next council if you will, so we will get something back to you before the end of this term.
Thank you very much, Counselor Anderson, then Counselor Hall.
Thank you, and then further to that. Um, they, uh, Mr. Rudick mentioned that he's been comparing our service levels to other municipalities, and I'm just wondering, will we also see um, not only a list of all the different services that we've considered and tabled to that discussion to be listed out that we haven't forgotten about them or that we see just how many that is, um, but also further to that if there, if we should also expect to see a list of services that we're not providing currently, that others are, so that we can compare actually what we are doing and what we aren't doing and see how we're comparing to those other municipalities?
Awesome.
Madam Chair, I'll answer, I'll work backwards from that, no. You're not going to see the services that other places provide that we don't, because some have identified six hundred services, so um, if we can, I mean, we can get you that list, uh. I think council might be aware of which ones were lacking that we probably should consider, and you could bring them up at any time, um. As for, trying to remember the, the the question before that. I'm sorry?
Sorry, the other part of my question was all the different services or I, topics that we've tabled to discuss after we see that inventory list, we, we tabled many items.
From, I get the, the actual list you're referring to, yeah.
Yep, uh, we're, you're going to see all of it in a couple different forms, um. And more to come, we've got a, we've got a draft list of things that we need to do coming out of this and at the end of this term uh for review with council and for review with the next council.
I really appreciate um this happening, I know it's a little later in the, in the season and in term that, you know, we'd hope to get a little more uh work done with that um from this council, but I think we're going, the county's going in a good direction and, you know, to be able to sit down and, and go through all these service levels, it's something that's needed to happen for a very long time, so I really appreciate that um this is the direction we're going in, um, and thank you very much for um going through all of that with staff as well, it's, it's, it's a huge job. And a hundred and seventy four still ringing in my brain is, as services that we offer, so uh when people are asking where their tax dollars are going um, hundred and seventy four services, when we identify them, will be in um an interesting list to be able to provide. Anybody else? Please, go ahead.
Um, I, I do think it's amazing the number of things the county does in the region and that we need to work. I appreciate that he identified the communication piece, that we need to, to talk about the good things that occur out of this organization, uh. You know, the, the county is a huge economic driver in this region, as all our municipalities, and, and we have to talk about the municipal role in that sense as well, and so I was, you know disappointed, I'd be glad that this is the first step, I'd hope to see a couple of different things out of the results, but I, I'm really happy that we've got the list and it's the first step. And look forward to an opportunity to continue to develop and discuss service levels at this table where we define clear expectations around specific services we provide, because I think that's the the, the translation that we need to be able to get to for ratepayers, so we can say, our targets on turnaround times, on callbacks or roadworks or all those things we can, we can start to do, and I suspect that we need to have long and specific meeting devoted just to that, or a workshop, not even a meeting, once that time comes. And I, the, the other notes that I made when uh Mr. Rudick was talking are, are about and I think we always, we need to remember there should always be constraint as it relates to the use of funds that we, that we're trusted with, so we can get the maximum value out of that, and I feel like historically, because sometimes it's easy for the county to get knocked on a little bit, I feel like historically that's been the case, there's been a high level of respect from the employees that work here and they're squeezing the the most, ringing the most value out of the dollars they have, and, and while there's always ex, individual exceptions on balance, I think there's a lot of good happening. And the, the presentation made me think about the need in our organization to shift from being a, or shift to being a results-based organization versus a task and process-driven place, and and that's a council thing, and, and to me, that means being clear about what our priorities are and the direction and kind of the destination we're headed. And then really for us as council, the task admin with creating a couple of plans to get us there, so that we can then, you know, make that final decision. And um, and I think we have to continue to be disciplined in our approach to our priorities and our reaction to emerging issues, that these things can't be a moving target, we have to have the discipline to, to say this matters, but we have to assess it as it relates to all our priorities, so admin has the stability to just get work done. And uh, so those are the, the thoughts that I had coming out of that that I wanted to share with you. And I think, you know, we've seen this over the term and we need to, this reinforces our need to, to continue collectively to work, the work of moving to a, a governance-based board focused on strategic priorities and accountability from our administration um on the progress toward those objectives, and, and to, to keep getting our fingers out of the, the pie, and, and I think we've been doing a good job about that, but to clearly test, or to, to move this discussion further so that we're at a point, whoever is sitting here. Whoever is sitting here, we can clearly test decisions against um, whether it moves us closer or farther to, to those goals. And I, I, I think it will shorten our meetings. I think it will make them more productive. And as we align those things, we will see the productivity that comes with the administrative team increase drastically as we, as we make that shift in that direction.
Thank you. Awesome. Anybody else? We're good. Did we have anybody pick this motion?
I'll move the um.
Recommend them.
To uh, receive for information and. Uh, maybe the, can we expect it to come back in the future? Like. With the motion as written, it would be a natural to expect that we'll see further discussion on this.
Yes, there will be.
So as presented.
Okay, the recommended motion? Yes. Council Hall would like to move the recommended motion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? I see no opposed. That would be eight and oh. All right. We are moving to nine point two, page two thirty-eight um, calendars, uh, meeting calendars for September and October. Um, I'll just add one uh, which is on the September nineteen. Um, we've all been invited to the Pleasant Valley Lodge Resident Park Grand Opening between one and three. I don't have any others, Council Cromwell.
Okay, I think motion to. At a council.
Um, for this, it, what's part of the calendar?
Are we invited as like counselors or just invited?
As a counselors. We've been invited as counselors. Oh.
Do we usually make a motion to? Say that like we sanction that event as a council?
Oh, we haven't in the past because when it ends up on the council. Calendar, I've always assumed that council has agreed that this is a council, council has agreed that this is a council saying.
I have never known that at all. I always thought it was like a, go if you want. It's on you kind of situation.
It, it totally is. Anybody who's available.
I know, but I guess what I'm saying is I never understood that we were invited as counselors, like unless we make a motion to say councils approves this as a council event. I E for mileage, et cetera.
Oh, I gotcha. Yeah, this is a council meeting um, calendar. So these types of events when they're on here. And correct me if I'm wrong, CAO, but I've always understood to be it become a council event.
So you can charge mileage for them? If you choose. I had no idea.
Okay.
Interesting. I always thought we had to decide, like, we had to vote on that. Uh, we didn't just pick. Okay, alright.
I could be wrong. Is that, does anybody else have a different understanding?
I never understood that.
Okay. Okay, Council, uh, Cromwell and Council Chamsik.
September twenty fifth at three P M. I have a Northern Lake College meeting.
Hey, thank you. September twenty fifth, three P M, Northern Lakes College. Your turn.
Um, nothing in September, October thirteenth, FCSS. Uh, because of the election, uh, Boyle Library will be October fourteenth. Sixteenth would be Town Library so far, and that's all I have.
Do you have times?
FCSS is ten, Boyle Library is seven, and Town is six.
Thank you very much. Council Minz. Deputy Minz.
Uh, September twenty fourth, uh, Island Lake Advisory Waterline Committee meeting. It's been three thirty.
P M or?
And I think that's.
Okay, is there anybody else? Council Cromwell?
And of course, the amendments to the calendar as per uh. Eight point two. Which will. Where we approve the change in the calendar will kind of change what we have listed on our calendar.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit?
Org meeting and.
All the org meeting, all those changes?
Yes.
Yes, as per eight point two, I, I think that'll be automatic um, happening. But yes, I appreciate the reminder. Took me a minute. Um, anybody else? Okay, I think Council Minz already, did you put the motion for? All right, Council Cromwell gets to do that. Council Cromwell would like to move to receive the calendars as amended. All those in favor? And opposed? You're in favor. All right, eight and oh, thank you. And the last part of our day will be uh, closed session items. Deputy Reed Minz would like to make a motion to go into closed. All those in favor? Eight and oh, no opposed. Like to do recess for seven minutes. Ten or seven? It's a lucky number. Seven it is. Seven minutes it is and it is one oh four, so one eleven. Alrighty, we have come out of closed. We have two motions uh, to make. Uh, under item thirteen point one, Council Cromwell would like to direct administration to proceed. With the land appraisal and further explore the option to purchase east portion of southeast ten sixty-three, twenty-three, west of four. Good. With no discussion, I don't think. All those in favor? And I believe we have no opposed. That's seven and oh. And the last motion of the day is thirteen point four. And that Council Chamsik would like to make the motion to contract Kraus Developments Inc. to complete. The CAO evaluation as discussed and further to reallocate up to three thousand dollars from Legislative Services Training Budget. To professional services. I have that written down if you'd like that. All right, if there's um, no discussion, all those in favor? That's seven and oh. Oh, pardon me. I missed it. Six and one. We had opposition six and one. Thank you. And I believe we can adjourn the meeting at this point at two twenty-eight.